I'd like to call to order the Planning Board meeting of March 3, 2022. As this meeting is being conducted remotely, all votes will be taken via roll call. Liz? You're on mute. Starting off right.
You got this. So. Those seeking to participate remotely may do so via the following. You could do it via Cisco Webex. So the townofberlingtonwebex.com is the URL. The meeting number is two, three, four, six, nine, eight, seven, zero, five, eight, zero. And the meeting passcode is sixteen forty-five. If you would like to join us by phone, you can do so at six, one, seven, three, one, five, zero, seven, zero, four. This meeting is also being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel, which can be found on Comcast Channel ninety-nine, R C N Channel fifteen, and Verizon Channel forty-one, and is being streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing, during the time for public comments. Questions can be asked via Webex, Syllex Chat function, Facebook Live Chat function during the meeting. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves. Back to you, Brenda.
Great. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Chairman, we forgot to do roll call to call a meeting to order, so I'm going to do so if you don't mind, Brenda.
Please do.
Chairman Rappaport.
Present.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Present.
Member Clark Raymond. Don't see him not yet. Member Covino.
Present.
Member Spahoe.
Present.
Member Pemba. Member LaRue. I saw you say it, but I didn't.
Present.
But I trust you. Okay, on to continuances, Brenda.
Oh, the town of Burlington will be holding the March 3, 2022 joint meeting of. No, this is not what we're doing.
Madam Chair, if I would like, if, if you are ready, I would like to make a motion to take item seven D out of order for discussion purposes.
I am ready, please.
Second, second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
I don't see, Member Clark Raymond, Member Covino.
Yes.
Uh, Member Spahoe.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes. Item D is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Two, definitions and Article Five, dimensional requirements to address groundwater separation for one dwelling districts submitted by the Planning Board. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Uh, Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Spahoe.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes. Madam Chair, I would further like to make a motion to take item seven L out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond is not here yet. Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Spahoe.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes. Item L is a continued public hearing application for approval of a site plan, fifteen Adams Street, Senate Construction is the applicant. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, as requested by the applicant in an email dated February second, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Uh, Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Spahoe.
Yes.
Uh, Member LaRue.
Yes.
Um, just for everybody's information, uh, fifteen Adams has their, um, their site plan has continued because we, um, we're waiting for comments from, um, conservation before they come to us. So just keep that back up your head, so.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, moving on to citizens' time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that is not on our current agenda? If so, would you please raise your hand, speak and identify yourself for the record, please? Seeing no one, uh, moving on to announcements.
Sure, so, um, the Sculpture Park Committee is going to meet March fourth at, uh, noon via Zoom. Uh, the zoning bylaw committee is going to meet March ninth at six thirty, um, via Zoom. Land Use will also meet March ninth at six thirty via Zoom. Is that on purpose? I don't know if that's on purpose for, um, applicants at town meeting or if it's just coincidence. Um, and then the deadline for town meeting members to file for reelection is March eleventh at one P M. Um, in the town clerk's office.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, well, I would like to say happy birthday to Burlington. We just celebrated our two hundred and twenty-third birthday. Um, also for, you know, uh, all their, all the moms out there and dads and parents, uh, and anyone who would like to sign up for, uh, rec department or, excuse me, parks and recreation activities. I believe enrollment starts tonight at six o'clock, so you're an hour and a six minutes late. And for, with kids, they know how eager they need to be to get online and enroll. Um, uh, in addition to that, um, I'm actually, I'm sponsoring, uh, the third annual townwide yard sale that will take place April thirtieth. So, uh, if you have any questions, reach out to me directly. And if there's anyone on staff or in the audience that has additional announcements that they'd like to make, uh, please feel free.
Madam Chair.
Please.
Um, I just wanted to add a little something. The Sculpture Park Meeting, uh, Committee is meeting tomorrow, but, um, there has been a lot of community interest lately about, um, this sculpture, which is called Global Warming, also known as the Cherries, because it was, um, created by a Ukrainian artist. And we have received word that he and his brother were able to escape over the border into Poland, but they are, um, they had to leave everything behind. So, um, the community has been expressing interest in, in helping, um, Nikita Tagora, which is the name of the artist. And we are contemplating different ways that we can do that. We're trying to raise the money to buy the cherries, which we always intended to do, but we didn't have the money ready yet. So we have heard a lot from community members that want to help, so I'm asking people to please reach out through our website, burlingtonsculpturpark.org, because we definitely could use your help. And, um, we're going to do everything we can to help this, this very promising young art, young artist. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we know what the asking price is for the sculpture?
Yeah. Um, it is about fourteen thousand dollars.
Okay. I mean, it's gorgeous. It's, yeah.
It is. That's actually standard. Um, all of the pieces that are currently in the park right now range somewhere between ten and fourteen thousand dollars. Purchased. We only lease them because we can't afford to purchase them all. Um, but.
Maybe we'll have an amazing corporate sponsor that wants to help us out with some of these.
I.
It tends to anyone who's listening.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, moving on to matters of appointment, uh, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, make a motion to take items seventy and seven B together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Um, Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Spahoe.
Yes.
Member Pemba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes. Item A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point five point four, hazardous and toxic, toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal or discharge of the network drive at Northwest Park Plan, P D zoning, uh, uh, Park Plan Development, P D zoning provisions, twenty-five network drive, Broad Institute of M I T and Harvard is the applicant. Public, uh, item B is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point five point six, generation, uh, generation or storage of hazardous waste in excess of the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator of the network drive at Northwest Park Plan Development, P D zoning provisions, twenty-five network drive, Broad Institute of M I T and Harvard is the applicant. Um. Good evening, folks.
Good evening, uh, Madam Chair. For the record, Robert Buckley, Reiman Bronstein. I have with me this evening, uh, Sarah Cottet, uh, who is the, uh, Senior Director of Facilities, uh, for the, uh, Broad Institute of M I T and Harvard, a world renowned institution, um, that is, uh, um, putting a big footprint in the Burlington community. Um, and Todd Fremont Smith from the Nord Bloom Company, the, uh, the owner of the site, um, and the landlord. Um, as you will recall, um, uh, two, twenty twenty-one, uh, the Nord Bloom Company, uh, permitted twenty-five network drive as a life science building. And we were recently before the board, uh, for the, um, permit for Verisal, which is taking half of the building. Um, the, uh, uh, Broad Institute has, uh, elected to pursue the other half of the building. Um, we have been before the Board of Health and received their comments, and it was an enthusiastic reception, um, uh, for the, uh, relocate, uh, the, the establishment of a major presence here in, in Burlington. What I'd like to do is have Todd, uh, briefly, uh, orient the board and take them through some of the, uh, the site, uh, uh, location of the building to refresh the board. And then I'd like to have Sarah maybe speak briefly to, uh, what they do and why they chose Burlington.
Well, thank, thanks, Bob, and good evening, everyone. I think Bob covered a lot of it already. Sarah Cottet's here from Broad, uh, Bob and I, and then Frank Di Pietro at, at B S C Group working on this. The board will remember, we had permitted, uh, ten years ago, eight years ago, a two hundred and seventy thousand square foot office building on this site where the star is showing on the screen. Uh, this is one of the last unbuilt sites, the last unbuilt site at Network Drive. We went back a couple of years ago, knowing that the life science wave was coming, and permitted a, a more of a science building, uh, multi-story building with sort of labs on the upper level and the potential for biomanufacturing on the lower level. Um, as Bob said, uh, that building was, had always been intended to be two, two tenants, to have two front doors. And so Verisal was the first tenant that this board met, uh, coming out of, uh, Cambridge. And then obviously Broad Institute is here tonight. Um, we are extremely excited that Broad has chosen Burlington as its, uh, first out of Kendall Square expansion in the market. Um, and they're planning on bringing their genomics, uh, unit out to Burlington. I'll let Sarah talk a little bit about that. But essentially, this is the building that we've always talked about. Uh, we worked with the staff and with various board members to, and, and, and conservation and Board of Health to, to, to bring this science building to Burlington. We are breaking ground on this, I think, next week. Um, so the steel has been ordered, rooftop equipment's being ordered, um, and it, it's very exciting. This is the most recent front, front door rendering of the Broad end of the building, which is the, which is the west side of the building, if I'm not mistaken. So again, it's a hundred and fifty thousand foot user coming out of Kendall Square, making an enormous financial investment in this building beyond what we are doing to build the building. They are going to then put a lot of money into this building, uh, eh, on a, on a long-term lease, um, and hopefully, uh, continue to, to grow here in Burlington. So Sarah, I don't know if you wanted to talk a little bit about what Broad does and, and, uh, what you saw here in Burlington. If you're there.
I know she's here.
Oh, sorry, having, having. Why, why? She is.
I'm trying to shut this off, sorry.
Good evening, Sarah. Emma.
Sorry. I'm not, I still can't do this after two years.
Our genomics platform, or G P, is actually the largest producer of genomic information in the world and is staffed by approximately four hundred individuals. Um, and it's an integral, and I would argue foundational part of the Broad community, uh, and has been co-located in Kendall Square prior to the co, the creation of the Broad, dating back to the days of the Human Genome Project in the mid to, to late nineties. So their move out of Kendall Square is really a historic event for the Broad as an institution. Um, as such, I knew that there would be a very high bar to meet when I started searching for a new location, given the expiration of their lease in Kendall in twenty twenty-four. And their group, of course, had very high expectations. Uh, so I had viewed over forty potential sites, uh, for the new location, but Burlington immediately stood out to me as really the perfect balance of industry, community and amenities. And, um, our genomics platform users agreed. So on behalf of the genomics platform and the Broad Institute, we are really so excited to be a part of the Broad community. And thank you for developing an amazing ecosystem for discovery.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
So, uh, Madam Chair, if there are any questions to the board or, uh, the audience, uh, would be helped, uh, welcome the opportunity to respond.
Uh, well, uh, first I want to say, uh, thank you, um, for coming this evening, and we're so excited to have you, and we're so excited that you're actually, uh, interested in, in Burlington. Um, I want to start off with staff. Do you have any comments regarding this item before, uh, I approach the board?
Um, from, from a technical perspective, um, we did so much, um, when we were permitting the twenty-five network drive building itself, twenty-five, twenty-seven now. Um, you guys had this discussion with Verisal very recently. Um, it's really just looking at the specific kind of, some specific, um, permits, um, for the use itself interior to the building. We've covered so much as, as part of the, um, previous discussion. So, um, from a staff perspective, we don't have any, any additional concerns or questions or, um, or anything, and we are all set and have drafted a, um, decision for you. Um, on another note, just in terms of really, you know, this, this life science effort, um, ecosystem, you know, even from reinventing office buildings and office areas and adding amenities and third of, and, you know, we've been on this train for a long time. And I think that, see, I don't know, it's kind of like a moment where I think we could have only wished we could get to this point. So I, I'm just really happy that many of you have been on this for decades long that we've been kind of building this. So I, I'm just really, um, proud to say that, um, the, of what we've done, proud to say that the Broad has decided to come to Burlington here. So just without, I'm just, you know, it's just a great, it's great for all of us, and I, I think it really puts us on the map and, you know, it's kind of a stratospheric difference from, I don't know, where we were. So I'm just really happy that we're, we're at this point and happy to have this conversation. So, thanks.
Thanks, Kristen. Um, I only have one question. Um, you, you had mentioned that they're, they're signing a, a significant lease or long-term lease. Can you share with us how long that term is? Uh. If you can't, that's okay. I understand.
It's more than ten years. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a long-term lease.
Thank you. Um. I'll, uh, open it up to the board. Is there anyone on the board that has any questions, comments?
Sure. Madam Chair, Ernie, if I could.
Absolutely.
Uh, thank you. I, I just wanted to say that it, it, that it's great to see the labors of this planning board and previous planning boards, uh, which all entered into, uh, getting us to this point and to these points, uh, today and hopefully in the future come to fruition. It's great to see prestigious, uh, organizations such as the Broad Institute. Having searched forty locations, which is, you know, not inconsequential, uh, choose Burlington. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Covino. Uh, is there anyone else from the board that would like to, um, to speak? Member Pemba.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, uh, to welcome them to Burlington and, and, uh, honored to have Broad in Burlington, and especially that they've chosen us for an extended period of time. I think it's a, it's quite an honor, so welcome and thanks for all the hard work, guys.
Great. Is anyone else from the board that would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing no one. Um. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak or make a comment regarding this matter? Again, seeing no one. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Uh, Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Spahoe.
Yes.
Member Pemba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Broad Institute of M I T and Harvard for a special permit pursuant to section one point five point four, hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal or discharge, and section one point five point six, generation or storage of hazardous waste in excess of the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator of the network drive planned to development district zoning provisions.
I don't know, I'm on the phone.
Contained in Exhibit A.
I think since, oh, I was on originally.
Second.
Or I wasn't on originally.
Chairman Rappaport.
Clark Raymond, welcome.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Um, Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Spahoe.
Yes.
Member Pemba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
We're glad you're here, uh, Member Raymond, but the motion passes.
Well, uh, thank you, folks, again, for choosing Burlington. We're so excited to have you. I thank you for your presentation and, uh, and welcome.
Welcome.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, on behalf of the applicant, I want to thank the staff, the board, um, and the Board of Health for, uh, the extensive meetings we've had over the last few months. Uh, um, I think that, uh, this is a testament, as we've said in the past, to what, uh, everyone, uh, doing a lot of hard work and, and keeping their eye on the, in their focus on what the objective is, what you can accomplish. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I believe, uh, Melissa Tentakalas is raising her hand if she would just like to speak, I think, maybe before you folks log off, or you may be with us for the night, I'm not quite sure. Uh, Melissa, would you like to speak?
Um, yes, thank you. I, for some reason, I can't get the camera to work, but I just wanted to welcome Sarah and Broad, of course. And I wanted to, um, you know, just to reach out from the Economic Development Office. I did add my comments to it. Um, and Sarah mentioned, you know, kind of her, you know, her search, you know, included many sites. But I think it's also just for us to keep in mind kind of the elements that are working here in the context of where they're locating. You know, the mixed use and walkability remains important for Burlington. So we think about this in this context and going forward. Um, and I think, you know, also to, you know, we're working in with, uh, Nord Bloom, with the other companies to also think about transportation. And I know, you know, we talked about that with Sarah as well. So I think this also will help us bring some new energy to some of the initiatives that we've also kind of held here and have included in our master plans. I wanted to just kind of share how I see those things fitting in with this Broad relocation, or I should say, expansion. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Melissa. Okay, folks.
Thank you.
Again, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Uh, moving on to item C. Item C is a public hearing. It's petition to rezone property to the Innovation, uh, Innovation District, fifty-four Middlesex Turnpike, fifty-six Middlesex Turnpike and fifteen Adams Street, submitted by the Coen Realty Group, Berlax Realty LLC and fifteen Adams Street LLC. Uh, who's here on behalf of this item?
Good evening, Madam Chair. And Tom Murphy here for Mr. Katsarakas, who's the owner of fifty-six Middlesex Turnpike. But, uh, I believe I'm also going to be, um, representing to a degree the, the other two applicants as well, because they weren't able to make it.
Good evening, Attorney Murphy.
Uh, also with me is, I think George Katsarakas is on the call. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as I mentioned, uh, George is the principal of Berlax Realty LLC. They own property at fifty-six Middlesex Turnpike. It's about a two point eight acre parcel, has about four hundred and fifty feet of frontage on, on Middlesex Turnpike. It's currently zoned, uh, B G. The neighboring property, um, fifty-four Middlesex Turnpike is owned by Coen Realty Company. That's about a two acre parcel. They have about a hundred and fifty foot of frontage, uh, also on Middlesex Turnpike. And the third parcel, uh, is owned by fifteen Adams Street LLC. It's located at fifteen Adams Street, about a six and a half acre parcel of land, has fifty foot of frontage on Adams Street. So those are the three parcels that are the.
Attorney Murphy, I'm just, I, I'm just taking notes here. Can, can you go back to the first parcel? You said it was fifty feet of frontage and what was the acreage?
For, uh, the Adams Street property is fifty feet of frontage on Adams Street with about six and a half acres.
Yep, the first one, I'm sorry.
Oh, the first one, I'm sorry. That has about four hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Middlesex Pike. It's about two point eight acres of land.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, the two properties on Middlesex Turnpike are both zoned B G currently, and the one on Adams Street is a general industrial zone. So, uh, my client, I believe, met with, um, some of the planning staff recently, uh, with the idea of trying to rezone his property. Um, as part of that conversation, um, he talked to a couple of his neighboring, um, property owners, and they also decided they wanted to join in, in the application. And essentially, Madam Chair, the, um, none of the three of them, to my knowledge anyway, have any immediate tenants in mind who are looking for this property. This is more looking down the road. Uh, the Innovation District, um, is obviously, as we just saw by the previous, um, application, uh, that's kind of the, the, the wave of the future, hopefully in Burlington, uh, commercially. Uh, commercial real estate, you've got to have a certain amount of being able to evolve and, and, and change with the times. So I think all three of these property owners, uh, they all have, um, buildings on their property now. They're all rented, they're, they're all doing well. But looking down the road, uh, they, they all immediately abut the two large properties at the top of the hill, uh, Millipore and Gutierrez property, which is already in the, uh, Innovation District. Um, and they're just, uh, they're of the belief that, um, doing this rezoning would be, um, good for them and their property down the road. It would also make sense from a zoning perspective, uh, because, um, many of these, uh, uh, life sciences, uh, uses like, like a campus setup. And so some extra, um, uh, square footage adjacent to what is already a large parcel might be, um, might be helpful down the road as well. So that, that is the, the motivation behind this, um, uh, this rezoning, Madam Chair. And, uh, like I said, they, none of them have a, an immediate tenant in mind. They don't have any specific project in mind. Um, but it's something that they're just trying to, uh, get their ducks in order as they move forward. And it just seems to be a, uh, a rezoning that makes sense. And, um, they would like to be doing it now and have it ready rather than scrambling around later on.
Sure.
Um, we understand this is just the first step. Uh, we've contacted Land Use Committee, uh, they're going to put us on one of their upcoming agendas. We'll go and speak with them. Um, so, uh, the hope is to have this on the, on the Maytown meeting. And clearly, we need a, uh, recommendation from the Planning Board prior to doing that. Uh, we hope that after you have your, your review process, you'll, you'll, you'll give this a positive recommendation. But that's essentially why we're here tonight, Madam Chair, just to kind of get the ball rolling, um, get the, um, get the, get the project out there. And, um, I'm available, as is George, to answer any questions, uh, address any concerns the board might have.
Great. Um, uh, thank you, thank you for that. Um, Steph, do you have any comments that you would like to make? I have a couple of questions that I can start off with, if you do not.
Um, I don't have a lot of comments yet. We're still kind of taking a look at it. I mean, as you know, that, the conversion from office to lab is, is something that's happening in conversation every day. Uh, we certainly created the, uh, ecosystem. So, um, I, I'm not surprised at all, some of these older industrial areas and buildings are looking for, you know, the next chapter. And, um, you know, we're taking a look at this. They are, they do abut, um, the Millipore site. Um, and in an area that just, you know, like we've talked about with the Blanchard Wheeler, kind of what's next for this whole area of town, um, about, I was in Garfield Circle, et cetera. So, um, we don't have anything formal at this point for a recommendation on our behalf, but, uh, just wanted to say that and continue to have this discussion.
Sure. Um, Brady, you're, you're the best map guy I know. Um, where is Millipore in relation to these three parcels? Millipore is on the left. What are the two parcels where the, um, the C shape or the U is, and then the dead end below fifty-six eleven? What, what, um, who occupies that space and then the other spaces underneath that?
I, I, if Brady, if you don't want, I can speak to that. So it's.
This would be great.
Yeah, so, um, fifty-six, um, twelve and sixty, fifty-six, eleven, um, they are, um, that's where the Real School of Music is, if that helps.
Yep. Okay.
And then, um, the purple parcel that, that has like a U shape, um, driveway through it, that's Garfield Circle. That's not part of this rezoning, but that's kind of, um, a low-rise industrial area in town. And then fifty-nine. industrial area in town. And then 5914, that is our 59 site, Filter Sales.
Okay. That's helpful. Attorney Murphy?
I could add to that if you had, the, we asked where Millipore was. I'm George Katsarakas. Good evening.
Good evening.
See, see in the, oh, what happened to the map that was just there? It's gone. Oops. Thank you, Brady. See where the wording is on the maps as proposed properties for rezoning? So that, that area in purple where wood properties is all, that's the upper area. That's Millipore. Millipore is to the right. The wall from Millipore kind of comes right up to the property line of all three of these properties. So that's, that's, this isn't topographical, but actually, that's better. You can actually see the silhouettes. So there were two buildings from Millipore up there in the purple. And I believe Mr. Gutierrez's property for that last one is to the left, not in the purple, but in the green. Does that sound right?
I think that's correct.
Attorney Murphy or Mr., and excuse me, and I apologize in advance if I butcher your last name, Katsarakas?
Perfect. You can say George. It's fine.
Thank you, George. Makes my life a lot easier. Just a couple of questions, you know, for, for both of you. When do these leases expire for the tenants that are on these parcels?
So for, for my particular building, we don't have tenants that go beyond three years. And if we have a couple that go beyond, a year or two beyond, we have a clause that allows us to terminate the lease should we demolish the building. So our longest lease is three years, essentially.
And so that's the 5914 property? Is that correct?
That's the 5612. That is 56 Middlesex Turnpike.
5612 is three years.
Yep.
And then what about the...
5611 is the, that's, that's where the FedEx building is located.
Yep.
And I don't, I'd have to ask Pat Cohen that question. Some of the leases might, might be a little bit longer than that. But a lot of his tenants are similar. They're smaller. And their leases, usually that size tenant is not longer than five years. The FedEx may be longer. But most times, commercial leases are in five-year chunks. But I can, I can find out and get back to you on that.
Sure. I'd appreciate that. That's, that's information I'd like to know. And then if we know with the 5914 parcel?
So 5914 is owner occupied. So if the filter sales own that building and occupy the entire building. So essentially, they have a lease, but they're in charge of the lease so they could end it if they wanted to.
Sure. Understood. That's all the questions I have at this point in time. But you know, I look forward to receiving the details of that information. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Vice Chair Gaffney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question. So with parcel 15, 59 dash slash 14, that's, that's currently before us for, because they want to get rid of their six or eight storage containers, right?
That's correct, Member Gaffney. They're before us for a site plan. They're waiting to go to conservation, and then they will come before us.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my question is, is they're now going to rescind that based on, on this rezoning? Or they're going forward? Or is that why they've been extending?
I, so, so it's my understanding that there's, they still want to go forward with the site plan. They still want to add the addition, the additional warehouse space. They, they still want to proceed with that. I can't, I can't speak for them on behalf of having this rezoning. But it, but it is my understanding that they, they haven't, they haven't come before us finally because we, we want to wait, Concom changes their plan, we want to have the final plan before we make a decision on that, on that addition.
So they haven't struggling with conservation because of...
Oh, they're not struggling. They just, they haven't filed. They're, it's, it's basically just a timing thing. And they're, they're not struggling with conservation. They got through Board of Health. They need to do, they have to be seen by conservation, and then they'll see us. It's, it's just a timing thing.
Okay. It's been quite a while, right? It's been a couple of months since we've seen them and the timing.
Yes. The, the, if you're wondering what the holdup is, the holdup was on the Board of Health that they, there was some, it's an older site, and so they needed to get an LSP to look at the site, to make sure that the monitoring wells were all set. So that's what the holdup was. I know that, is that, does that help?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So they had to wait for that before they went to conservation, I'm assuming, right?
Yes, that was, that's what they told me. They, they wanted to make sure, you know, they wanted to go to Board of Health, make sure that their plan was okay. And once they had the comments from Board of Health, because they had issues with the LSP and figuring all that out, then they, they need to go to Concom to finalize their stormwater, and then they will come to us.
Okay. And just the, the other thing. So is, my assumption is based on the 50-foot frontage on Adams Street that these three are going to be joined at some point for, it'll be, it'll be, because if you have, if you're going to do kind of three separate ones, and then I guess my other question is they're currently, one, let's see, the School of Music is two, two stories or three stories? FedEx is two, right? Because they've got...
Right. So the School, the School of Music building is about a 20,000 square foot building, just under. The first floor of the, the building is only a couple thousand square feet. Entire second floor is almost 18,000. FedEx is, is two full floors. They actually built into the topography of the hill, so they're at grade on both floors. They come in from the first one to the back. And I think all the properties are contiguous and all but the I, I district behind us. So the property owners are acting independently. There's no agreement to act together or whatever. I mean, it's, it's, it's an evolving process. Each one has, right now, different uses. But the, the thought is that, you know, with all this Innovation District going on, we're right on top of it. And it allows for possible campus development as this swings into the next cycle of, of development for life sciences. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Thank you. Yeah. So I guess the staff, they're, they're, they're currently at two stories each. What, what can they get up to with the today's zoning? What can they get up to height from with the Innovation District? And just what your thoughts are with regard to traffic and traffic mitigation if, if this is approved?
As I said, we're just kind of beginning to look at this. We haven't done a full analysis. However, these sites are all older industrial sites, and they are built out at a much higher FAR than what kind of more modern buildings are. So when you, we did a quick kind of back of the napkin, at a point five, there wasn't a lot more develop, actual development number and square footage. It was just very much, you know, different configurations. And as you mentioned, if you combine the buildings. But in terms of additional development with the, between the BG and IG going to I, we weren't seeing a huge amount of square footage. And actually kind of saying, do you want to do this? It's not going to add a lot more square footage. But as I said, we will have some more number crunches, we'll, we'll have some more numbers for you at the next meeting. But just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hello. Hello.
We can hear you, Paul.
Say what?
We can hear you.
Okay, good.
Go ahead, Paul.
Well, I can hear you guys. I've been listening.
Yep. Go ahead, Paul. Paul, do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know I'm out here.
Yep, we got you, Paul. Yep. Any, Brenda, you back on?
Yeah, no, I'm here. I was just on mute at that time. Does anyone else have any questions or comments to make at this time? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make, that has any questions or comments?
Hi, Brenda, it's Andrea.
Hi, Andrea.
Um, just resident, so just listening. Very interesting. I like that you guys are going to turn our town into life sciences. Just remember, we wanted a bike path over that neighborhood a long time ago. So if there are plans that you guys can, you know, put that in a little footnote, that's a good area to keep us away from Middlesex Turnpike on two wheels.
Understood. Andrea, could you state your full name and your address for the record?
Yeah, Andrea Tracy, 4 Kenny Avenue, Burlington Town Overly District.
Thank you.
Is Burger King staying, or are they going to eat Burger King also?
Sounds like, that sounds like an interesting analogy. Are we going to eat Burger King? I mean, I love Burger King.
Delicious.
Yeah. Madam Chair, can I answer that question? Kind of...
By all means.
So it, it's interesting you bring that up because as we're talking about all of these sites, between 25 Network Drive, North West Park, this site down Middlesex Turnpike, we have been exploring connections to the Minuteman Bike Path. That is something very front of mind that we've been looking at with some different projects. Having these, these areas and this kind of, this section of town kind of in play allows us for different alternatives that may, or, you know, may not necessarily be an option otherwise. As I mentioned, with the, the 15 Adams site, that's a site that also allows for potential connections up to the Millipore site and the Housing Authority site. So, you know, as, as we look at rezonings and look at different possibilities, we're also trying to see how that plugs into these greater goals that we have in terms of bike connections and connections to property that otherwise doesn't have really access at this time. So I just wanted to bring that in. And there's also been comments that of kind of, we should overlay where the bike path connection is, in fact, over this and really see how those play out. So I, I think it's an important piece of this dialogue as we move forward.
Thank you so much, Kristen. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Melissa Tentakalas, would you like to speak?
Um, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just also wanted to kind of contribute and echo a lot of what, you know, Kristen said. But I also had the opportunity to meet with George Katsarakas because, you know, he is a local property owner, which I think is, you know, has been kind of in a way, you know, the secret sauce of Burlington, that we've had, you know, property owners that have, you know, lived nearby, have grown up in our community, who've cared about our community. And I know that is kind of the softer side, but I think it, you know, from my experience in economic development, having, you know, absentee property owners, it's a different ball of wax. So having someone local who is interested in investing and improving your area is actually one of those kind of intangible special qualities. Also, just to, you know, we've talked a lot about this, especially, especially at town meeting, that we had made this, you know, effort to expand and grow the life sciences. But in order to do that, you do need physical space, or you need tenoning options. And so when we were speaking to George, I think, at least from my perspective, you know, one thing that this does, it increases those opportunities and options to locate here. And I think to Andrea's point, it's actually a very good one, in how that we leverage these developments for community benefits. And we can't lose sight of that because I really feel like these are important pieces of the puzzle for long-term sustainable development. You know, whether we're talking about more open space, whether we're talking about bike connections or improved, you know, street connections, I think that, you know, has come into our conversations a lot more with new investment and how we can leverage that. I see Frank DePietro's on here. His team has actually initiated a bike feasibility study. We've moved that forward with, you know, a community connections grant with the MPO. We're going to try to, you know, secure funding for the next year for that. But that feeds into this network. Also, looking with the property owner, you know, that Middlesex Turnpike, we have an opportunity to make a real boulevard, you know, something dynamic. But we do need the development to create that street edge and those, you know, connections across. And that's where we can work with Mass Works and show that nexus between redevelopment and economic development and community kind of benefits that we want to see here for improvement over the long term. So I just kind of wanted to share those pieces along with this, you know, this story and working with this property owner and the adjacent property owner on this.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this matter?
Madam Chair, this is Ernie. Can I ask Melissa Tentakalas a question, please?
Of course.
Melissa, I was wondering, when you, when you look at all this holistically, and do you take into account the fact that one of the things that has made Burlington attractive to, to some of these tenants that were, or businesses that we're seeing come in is the amenities? And do you, when people go for rezonings, do you look at how, if any of these properties that are asking to be rezoned, have some of the amenities that are attracting other companies? How, how that works out? And when you talk to these landowners, do you take that into account? Please.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I may.
Please.
Ernie, in, in direct, you know, kind of, you know, I think we look at it in context. We haven't explored, you know, anything specific on individual sites at this point in time. Because we have existing zoning that is something that, you know, in this case, applicants looking to change to existing zoning, we're just kind of looking with, kind of what we're working with what we got. But we do take into consideration the context. So that's why we're looking at Middlesex Turnpike in particular, and how do you cross that street in any meaningful way so that you can access existing amenities, right? So it can be its own hub. You know, the transportation, as we know, has challenges. But once you park, once you're parking for your job, or, you know, what we're hoping to do is create these nodes that you can walk within those to get to, you know, kind of that 15-minute city that we talked about. But, but can get to a couple of different things to do without getting back in your car. So I think that's what we looked at to some extent at this point. And I know, just I'll add that one maybe piece about the longer-term plan for Mall Road and Blanchard, is that part of what we'll look at for any new zoning that we would propose to you would be to incorporate more amenities kind of with insights as well. So that would be something that we're trying to at least start to at least conceptualize.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the, the, the comment back. I wasn't pointing at any particular property. I just happened to think of that and wanted to raise it. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Maybe my footbridge, Melissa? For those who don't know, I, I am a big, big endorser for having a footbridge over Middlesex Turnpike going from the mall to other properties. But that's a topic for a different day. Is there anyone else that would like to have a comment on this matter? A bear in mind, there's 40-plus people. So if I don't see you, please just chime in. It looks like I'm seeing no one. May I have a motion, please? Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of March 17th, 2022?
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Spahel.
Yes.
Member Mpemba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, George, and thank you, Attorney Murphy. We look forward to continue conversations regarding this matter.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item E is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the network drive at North West Park Plan Development District zoning, special conditions and use provisions submitted by Nord Bloom Development Company at Suffilience, NDB Property Owner 1 LP, and NDB Property Owner 2 LP.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Robert Buckley, Reiman Bronstein, Todd Fremont Smith from the Nord Bloom Company, Frank DePietro, and Marissa Valentino from BSC, our site civil. The last time, as, as you know, we made a presentation to the Joint Boards, Land Use, as well as ZBRC, to introduce the proposed rezoning. We broke it down into two distinct components. The first being to allow for additional development by, by, up to about three buildings, we think. And the second was to look at some of the definitions that over time, the underlying zoning bylaw of the town has been revised and additional definitions, particularly with respect to life science, but other areas have been added. but other areas have been added. And what we're finding is that the town administration is confronted with many different, somewhat unique definitions. We're trying to consolidate them so for consistency. And we also found over the years that the ability to understand what net leasable square footage is versus gross is a difficult concept because it's constantly changing. So to make it easier, we are trying to go to the simple gross square footage, which is an easy calculation for both building and other town departments to make. But we'd also like to do a short presentation tonight to respond to some of the issues that were raised at the last meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to Todd to talk about that.
Thank you, Rob. Again, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Todd Fremont Smith with Norblum. I'll go quickly. I know that you've seen many of these slides before. I think you know me well enough to know that I can talk fast. So as Bob said, we're again, seeking three or four new buildings at Network Drive. We are now out of space now that carousel and road have taken their respective blocks of space that we were developing. Before we even put a shovel in the ground, those are gone. So we're now thinking towards the future as we all have to do. So it's just really the ability to grow on the campus. And as Bob said, some of the changes and definitions and some of the language in the PDD, which has been difficult to manage. I'm now trying to advance the slide and it's not working. Hold on. Here with me.
While you're doing that, you know, you've talked about net to gross. Have you thought about usable for footage?
The, the, the concept now is that leasable, which is a similar type concept where you, you know, what could be occupied by a tenant.
Familiar. That's, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. So we just thought it's a very complex, as tenant space is reconfigured, you change from what was previously, you alter that net leasable. So trying to maintain that on such a large campus over the years, it can be done. We have charts that show it. And every time we do anything on the site, we do meet with planning staff to go through it. We just came to the realization that people with extended history, I think I'm the only one who was here when it was done, from the applicant side, the, the history is, is difficult to recreate. So we, we we're just attempting to make it easier. It's six of one half and a dozen of the others.
So again, this is the campus at the northern end of Northwest Park Assembly. Everyone knows this. This is what it looks like from 400 feet. It's a very nice campus. It's almost like you're going to college instead of going to work, which is why people like it, which is why people in Cambridge are coming out and choosing to locate here after looking at many other sites. We've got great connectivity with the bus service right there to Il Life. And then, as the board knows, we've all worked together to create an array of amenities, which I won't go on and on about it, but it is working. It's drawing people in. So this again is the road entrance that we just talked about a minute ago. We are seeking to amend the parcel one definition. These are parcel one, parcel two, were, were two zoning districts that were in the original Sun Microsystems and Network Drive PDD. So we're referring to parcel one. All the changes we're talking about refer to parcel one. We're not proposing any changes across the street at the daycare center, the bank, or the assisted living facility. So the big question to town meeting is, could we please build three or four buildings in these parking lots? You see these enormous surface parking lots, which, you know, without exceeding the ring road at Network Drive, without, without going out into the green space around in the middle of Network Drive or around Network Drive, just looking at these parking lots as canvases for future, future growth. And we do, we do think that that is a life science. There's a life science wave coming, as I've said to the board before. It's currently eight million square feet of, of demand in the market tenant, tenants in the market looking for space. So we want to get in front of that. What we think we heard, and we may have heard the wrong thing, but when we first presented to this board and to Land Use and to ZBRC as a joint, as a joint hearing, we heard some major themes. One was traffic. Obviously, we hear that often, parking. What is the future need of parking? Sustainability? Are you folks leaning into sustainability as we, as you ought to be if you're talking about new buildings? And then I'll just better definition and explanation of the signage changes that are being proposed. So with, with the, with the chair's permission, I'll just go through what, what we're thinking is going to happen. Some of this is, this life science market is evolving. What we do here over and over again is, and you heard it from Brod, that their stabilized, their stabilized population for 150,000 feet will be about 300 people. So that's, that's another reaffirmation that most of these lab, lab and life science users are parking at about 2.0 to 2.5. That's in contrast to, you know, 3.5 to 4.0 on an office deal. So we think that these lab, these life science tenants that we're building buildings for at this point are coming with fewer cars. We know from, from other projects, not yet this project, but it's deeply suspected in the civil engineering community that lab users generate about 30%, about a third lower peak traffic. So they come, they're coming and going, not just at nine and five, but they're coming and going all kinds of times, much more diffused throughout the day. And then Frank can speak to this more. I don't think he can yet, but we, we also deeply suspect that post COVID-19, you know, our office is going to a hybrid model. Many of these offices are going to a hybrid model. We think that there's going to be a reduced traffic burden, generally speaking, going forward. And again, I think probably by a third to 40%, just as, as these, as we start to hear what tenants are doing post-COVID. And we'll talk more about this as we go, but these are just some initial thoughts. And again, my computer is not as powerful as the Burlington computer. Hold on.
Well, while you're navigating your computer, Vice Chair Gaffney, just do you want to chime in with a question?
So I was, and maybe I just wait for the end of it, but what I was looking for is maybe a table of what you're going from and what you're going to in the, in the changes to the, to the zoning, you know, with, with actual language and, and specific wording.
Okay.
So I guess my, my question is, is just listening, does the current zoning allow for the three to four buildings? If it, if it doesn't, why doesn't it? And what are you going from? You're going, in what language are you changing such that it allows it? So that's kind of the detail in the specific language that I'd be looking for here.
Okay.
Thank you. Now listen, continue listening. Thank you.
Bob, do you want to talk about that now or after?
Yeah.
You can finish your presentation.
We may not have all the answers tonight, but that's, that's a fair, fair question. And we get the question. Just a reminder that this board, I think, routinely requires that we conduct free and post-construction traffic monitoring so that, you know, this is, would obviously be a phased growth pattern where we wouldn't build all four buildings at once. We'd build one at a time. And then we'd have to be monitoring traffic as we go along, as we always do. And why? Here with me. Parking, site-wide, we have reciprocal easements that, so there's no assigned parking at Network Drive. I just mentioned that, that parking can, we can share parking between the buildings. And that's always been the way we've managed it. That way, we don't, we're not building additional parking that we don't need. All the new parking that would be required if I put, for instance, in this picture, if I put a building here and I need to replicate some level of parking that we can all debate in the future, it would be done in structured parking. So we would build parking garages as opposed to building more surface parking. And again, we do think that the market is suggesting a reduction in overall parking post-COVID. This is just a shot showing the campus. And again, you see these large parking lots. But you also see a lot of green space around the campus. It's a very green environment. And we would stay, obviously, in future development within the ring road. We would not exceed the ring road. Sustainability, the campus is certified. We've been, so our team's been working on this campus now for over 10 years. We are certified as LEED Gold. I think the board's familiar with LEED. We've also been awarded FitWell, two stars. FitWell is a newer concept which seeks to promote wellness and wellbeing and healthy food and healthy chemicals, you know, cleaning materials and trying, trying to encourage people to use the stairs instead of the elevator. It's a very holistic program. I'm told that we are the first, that this campus is one of, one of the first campuses in the United States, if not the first, to achieve two stars at FitWell. So this is another sustainable system that, that you may or may not be, be familiar with. Design elements going forward, what we're thinking is if we build parking garage, if we're allowed to build new buildings with parking garages, photo voltaic should be on the roofs of those buildings. This is actually a photo of the Oracle site in Burlington. And you can see top right here, you can see those PV panels up on the top level of the parking garage. We're looking into increased electric vehicle chargers. We have some now, but we're going to need a lot more very soon, we think. We're committed to white roofing going forward. So these buildings traditionally have had EPDM black, EPDM rubber roofs. The more modern roofing material is white, and it can drastically, it's much more reflective and helps to decrease heat island effect. And we've been working on increased and more natural plantings around the campus, which I'll show you in a minute. We continue to work on that. Frank is currently studying the master planned drainage, stormwater drainage system for potential upgrades to that system. It's been performing very well, but there are some new regulations we may be able to address in, in, just by upgrading the existing system. We do have 24 stations, electric vehicle charging stations. I read recently that Ford Motor Company, of all the Ford Mustangs sold in the United States, 50% of them last year were electric. So my, as we all know, that the electric cars are coming fast, and we need to be planning for that in the future. And then just the green spaces around campus, it's not all parking lots. There's a lot of green space. These are the community gardens. We showed you this last time, very popular amenity. We've got the fitness trails that are going between Northwest Park and Network Drive. Most of those trails have been reestablished. I owe Kristin Kazner an update on the signage, but this is where the signage is designed, and we're starting to put these hiking trail signs around, around the park. It's actually quite pleasant. Something, just in talking with our management group, we've been working with MDLA, which is a landscape architecture firm, to minimize the impact on this campus. This is from last summer. We've been trying to reduce the amount of grass that needs to be mowed because it takes a lot of irrigation water, takes a lot of gasoline to mow it, takes a lot of labor, it costs a lot of money. So this was a pilot program to do what's called a flowering meadow. So this is a pollinating garden that is, I was told, this is an actual picture from last summer. So we would be looking to expand this program. This worked very well. The flowers grew very well, didn't get in anyone's way, didn't cause any problems, and actually reduced the cost of maintaining, of cutting grass and and watering the lawns. We were able to reduce the irrigation here and do this kind of thing. And if the board was interested, we could expand this campus wide. We have honeybees, obviously, with the pollinating. There was a bear, a Burlington bear, that ate all the honey two years ago. So they've relocated these, these honeybees, but they're still on campus, and they come out every summer. We've been working on reducing the amount of annual flowers, annual plantings, and doing more perennials. This is a digital representation of what has, I'm told, been planted. I don't have an actual photograph of it yet. But the idea would be to shift to more year-round perennial plants that don't require constant replanting, constant, you know, it's just such a huge effort to water them, to fertilize them, where we could put in perennials that would come up every year, and might even be able to target wildlife with, you know, winter berries and that kind of thing to be more ecologically sustainable. And again, you see a lot of green grass here that we're trying to look at ways to reduce the amount of mowed lawns. And then just in terms of wellness and, and getting people inside, outside, we've been working on all the little interactions of the building where the building meets the campus. These are actual photos from last summer where, you know, we've been really trying to soften this campus. It was very, it was a very hard-edged campus, trying to create places where people can go outside and have lunch, go out, get out of their office. So we're working on that around the campus, and we would continue to work with the board on this, on these types of changes. In terms of signage, the sign that's on the screen, this is, this is the actual building, this is the zoning today. The existing limitation is six feet by 10 feet. What my management folks are asking for is the ability to apply the Route 3 signage, the wall signage in the Route 3 corridor under our zoning over the whole campus. The thought is that this sign up here is, is very nice, but it could be a little tiny bit bigger. So instead of six by 10, maybe eight by 12. And we can mock that up for the board to show you what that might look like, but this is a tenant at the park veracode, and you can just see in the scale of the building, in our opinion, the signage could be a little bit, could, we could carry a little bit larger signage on the wall. Tenants really care about this stuff. They really care about seeing their name and lights when people come to visit, being able to find them in the building. So again, this is not, this is not critical, but it's just something we thought we could ask for while we're before town meeting. And I think that's it. Next steps, we continue to work through all the boards, the Select Board, Land Use, ZBRC, the Planning Board, CONCOM. We'll be, we'll be targeting, offering an open house in April when the weather warms up a little bit for town meeting members to come out and see the campus and see the buildings that, that are now fall. And I think that's, I think that's our presentation for tonight, and we can take questions.
Madam Chair, could I respond to Mr. Gaffney's question just briefly, but I understand what he's looking for. Bill, the, the controlling aspect is the square footage. So we're asking for an increase of square footage permitted on the site. That's what is necessary to build the additional buildings. So we'll have a chart that will show that.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Gaffney, did you have something else that you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, thanks. Just a couple of things. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on the, the solar with Burlington, and maybe to staff, do we, have we put in any sort of solar bylaw there? I know in, remember Covino and I went to Holy Cross for one of the, the planning courses there, they talked about having solar bylaws. Do we, do we actually do anything on that? I know we, we met at at the Grand View Farm too, and talked about something like that. And then do we, would we get, Burlington get credit for that solar that to be put up in the garage? I know we didn't get it over on, across the highway there, on the parking garage.
But we did do some amendments to solar in the zoning bylaw, which most of you were around for. This proposal actually adds some of those, the same type of language we have in the zoning bylaw updates to this proposal to allow for solar opportunities. In terms of your last question about connecting it into the Burlington system, I, I don't know the answer to that question, but can certainly look into it.
Yeah. I think it was more of credits. There was, there's, there's a thing about solar credits and who gets credit for it. And just the only thing about the signage, I wasn't familiar with the Route 3 corridor signage, anything different than that. Is it, do we have an overview over, I guess, a sign bylaw for Route 3? Maybe that's the staff I'd ask that, that says it's going to be eight by 12?
Let's see. So in Northwest Park and Network Drive, there's kind of, there's sign bands as you go from Middlesex Turnpike over to Route 3. I can tell you more about the Northwest Park one, but anyway, we can provide, if it's not in the backup, send it out to the that existing, the existing bands of allowance as you go from Middlesex Turnpike to Route 3, being a larger signage allowed facing Route 3 than where you are in Middlesex Turnpike.
So, so for clarification, it's the PDD's Route 3 corridor sign requirements that they want to push that, which is larger, they want to push that into the park. I get it.
Yeah, it's specific to the Plan, Plan Development District.
Yeah, yeah. And they want to take the one that's on the highway and move that in towards, towards the development. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So Kristin, isn't that under the purview of the ZBA, the signage, or is that something that we would actually?
So signage, the regulation itself is something that we're discussing here in terms of what the zoning regulation is. If they want to modify that, it's a sign permit with the ZBA. So what the conversation here is, what do we want the regulation of
Understood.
sign bylaw, zoning, sign zoning bylaw to be in terms of, in the PDD provision, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Could get a few examples together of the, kind of what that looks like in terms of what it is now and what we're looking for, as, as mentioned with the mock-up. If anyone's interrupted.
Yes, I will.
That's perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that. And, and folks, if you could do that, that would be great. I love the idea of the gardens. I love the idea of the meadows rather than, you know, needing the additional irrigation because, you know, as a resident, we all know how lovely it is to have the, the odd day, even day. Let's, let's water our lawn on the, you know, the respective day due to the water bans. Have you thought about maybe adding some fruit trees or some berries or something along those lines, like to that, to those meadows? So, you know, apple trees, pear trees, raspberries, you know, blackberries, anything along those lines? Yeah. It would just be, I, I think it would be a nice addition to the gardens. And then also, there's a comment, Ms. Sally Willard had asked, are there currently marked trails that people can walk? And if so, is there parking available for those folks that want to walk those?
So the answer is yes, there are trails typically. So the answer is yes, there are trails. Typically, I would say not in the winter. We don't, we don't clear them in the winter, but in the fall, spring and summer, they're, they're quite nice trails. Some of them are marked. I owe, I owe the, the staff a more aggressive marking timetable. And I told my staff recently, we need to get these signs up this summer, but the trails actually have been maintained. We have landscapers that go through and maintain them. Some of them, some of them go along Route 3. It's a little bit noisy, but it's still very pleasant. Some of them are more internal to the park. And yes, there, I don't, we don't have any designated parking, but there's a trailhead, for instance, in the Lifetime Fitness parking lot, which is, which is marked and there are always spots there and that's a very public area that people can go and, and, and try out some of these, some of these fitness trails.
And I, I feel like we asked this question before, or maybe I asked it at, at a different point. Are those monitored? Is there any type of security or lights or, and I think we said no because it was a, it was a pretty hefty burden, if that's correct?
Yeah, that gets into a whole legal quagmire that I'm gonna, maybe Bob and I can respond at, at another time.
And that's quite all right. It's just something that, you know, i- if we're talking about trails and whatnot, we're going to add that to, you know, you know, an activity to the public. It's.
Yeah, and I think, I believe there are laws which protect a landowner who allows the public to, to water.
There is protection from liability if they're open to the public and there's no charge. I will tell you that the public service personnel, not only in Burlington, but other, other areas do not like to have people on the trails after dusk because their ability to police them or respond is limited. So what I would suggest of, we've done in a number of the communities, you post the rules.
Yeah.
Hours, you know, when it's available and no drinking or whatever, you know, so.
No drinking while you're running? Does everybody?
Who runs?
Well, it depends what you're running from.
Right.
Member LaRue?
Hi, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I've walked those trails. They're very nice. They're very well maintained, but they could use a little more signage, but it's very pleasant walk. I agree with you. And I saw some really unusual mushrooms and flowers there too. Oh, that was pretty cool. I did not eat them. They were bright.
Don't eat the mushrooms. That's one of the things we put on the signage.
Scary looking. I would not have eaten them. Regarding the signs, I would like to see mockups and I would like to see that language from Kristin. I'm actually a little bit more concerned or more interested in the lighting for the signs than the size of the signs because as you all know, we have a couple of signs in town that are really, really bright. And that's the kind of thing I, I definitely want to avoid because it can be seen from very far away. So I'd, I'd like to see that language from staff, please. I also love the meadow and I would love to see you continue that throughout campus. I confess that during the COVID shutdown, I stopped by the side of that road and picked some of your, Black Guy Susan's and my mother.
We have you on the video.
My last question was just a curiosity thing. What do you do with the honey and would you consider donating it to the food pantry?
I don't know the answer. We, we hire, we don't handle bees ourselves. We hire our group to come in and it's more a matter of making sure there's enough pollination for the wildflowers. And I, I would assume he takes the honey away and sells it, but we could, I can find out. It'd be fun to have some local honey.
It's very nicely done. Thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you, Member LaRue. Member Covino?
Yes, just a, to the African, just a point of clarification. Do I understand correctly that any new buildings under this zoning change proposal or parking structures will be built in areas that are already non-pervious parking lots? Will any of them, will you be using any, you will not be using any of the current green spaces, if that's what you're...
Correct, correct. We might have to reload, relocate some traffic islands or something.
You're not taking a, a large meadow and turning it into a building. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then I guess, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Gaffney, I think you're looking for a map?
Just a real, one, real quick, that, I just put that on the, the comment, but I think someone's, I'm going to take their thunder from the, one of the, from the public with regard to the bridge over to the Landlocked Forest. I think if we're, if we're, and I don't have the, again, you're going to show me what kind of increase you're looking for, you know, for the three to four extra buildings with regard to, to this, to the space. You know, at this point, you know, adding three, four buildings and maybe some parking garages is a huge deal, right? And, you know, maybe this is the point where we get that pedestrian bridge from somewhere over to the Landlocked Forest, which, you know, I don't know if we'll have another opportunity. Everything is developed over at Third Ave and it wasn't done then, which would be in a good opportunity, but this might be the last opportunity we get to cross over Route 3, you know. So, you know, how, how, how bad do you need the, the three buildings and, you know, what would it take for a pedestrian bridge to get, get us over to, to a, a, a very important Burlington asset?
Excellent idea, Bill.
Thank you.
May I make a comment about that, the Landlocked Forest?
Of course.
Paul, I go over there often. It's, you know, you just go under Route 93 and take a left and up the hill and there's nice parking there, under the power lines. And there're usually half a dozen cars there. And you, you sat out here in Lexington, but there's, there's nice trails. I don't want paved trails through the woods and so forth, but there, there are trails which are easily accessible. You can't get lost because, you know, all you have to do is walk down and you're on Route 3. So, huh?
Right, right.
Right. So, so, and, and it's, it's a wonderful place to walk. And I like it left natural as much as possible. I know when some people walk, they want paved places and all kinds of signs and so forth, but I, I'm one that would, you know, enjoy it as it is now. And yeah, maybe there are some minor changes can be made. I see a sign every once in a while, which is new, which is helpful. But I mean, if you want to walk in the woods, you want to walk in the woods. That's my comment. Thank you.
I thank you, Member Clerk Raymond. There's another comment in the chat that says, can we get some state funding for the bridge? So thank you, Ms. Sally Willard, for that comment. And I hope that the proponent will look into that as well as that is a request. Is there anyone else that has a comment or would like, has a question? If not, I think that, you know, we're, we're going to talk about this quite a bit.
We are. Thank you.
Yes, hi. Dave Webb, Land Use. I keep repeating some of these issues and we will have the proponents of this to a land use meeting here in the next couple of weeks. I'll be in contact with you. But one question maybe hasn't been addressed is these three or four new buildings you want to build. Is the parking garage just separate from those?
Yes. Yeah, it would be nearby.
So three or four buildings plus the parking garage?
Correct.
Okay. And just in general, yes, the less non-permeable surface, the better. You have a, not just in this area of your park, but in other areas, you have a lot of parking spaces that aren't being used and may not be very much used in the future, according to what you said about lab space usage and fewer trips by cars and so forth. So I'd recommend, you know, more trees in general is one thing and more trees, the better. Less non-pervious surface, the better. You know, you put plantings in a lot of those parking areas, they're not, not going to use, I think, a serious study of what you really need for parking for the whole campus, I think, would be very helpful in that regard. And along the lines of climate change, I'm not quite sure what the lead gold standard is. I'm sure it's a very high standard, but is it possible to avoid using fossil fuels at all for heating, cooling those buildings? We need to reduce, we need to get rid of use of fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I, I think you've heard a lot of really good feedback from the board and from the audience. So moving forward, unless somebody else from the board has, or somebody from the audience has anything new to say, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter at the planning board meeting on March 17th, 2022.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Españo?
Yes.
Member Pemba?
Yes.
Member LaRue?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you as well. I don't, I don't think we're getting rid of you guys yet though, are we?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items seven H through seven K together for discussion purposes.
Second. Second.
Wait a minute, did we do?
Did I go too far?
I think, yeah, I think you jumped actually.
Want to amend that motion, take items seven F and seven G together for discussion purposes?
Okay, yeah.
Second again, again, or third, whatever.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Españo?
Yes.
Member Pemba?
Yes.
Member LaRue?
Yes.
Item F is a, item E is a public hearing. Petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 3 districts, Article 4 use regulations, Article 7 overlay districts, 8.5.0, Town Center to create a new zoning district, Town Center multi-family, multi-family TCM submitted by Novaya Real Estate Ventures LLC. Item F is a public hearing, petition to rezone property to the Town Center Multi Family TCM District 135, 137, 137R, 139A, 139, Cambridge Street, submitted by Novaya Real Estate Ventures LLC. Good evening, folks. Who's here on behalf of this item?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Pleased to be before you, for the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn, here tonight representing the applicant. And I have a few folks here from the applicant team as well. I know Peter Carboni and Carl Treishman, I believe, helped. So very pleased to be before you in connection with the continued dialogue here for the properties at 135, 139, Cambridge Street and the proposed zoning bylaw amendment that's been submitted. I know we had an opportunity at your meeting two weeks ago, along with members of the Land Use Committee and Zoning Bylaw Review Committee to give a pretty detailed presentation at the time about what our concept and vision was for this property. Again, just up on the screen, members of our development teams, of whom are here tonight, but very much looking forward to the opportunity to redevelop a piece of property that I think by many accounts is one which I think everyone agrees is not being utilized to the highest and best use and certainly in a, in a manner that's consistent with what the Town Center vision was when it was initially adopted. So thi- this is the property here that we're talking about, which is again, a little bit over three acres. I think it's 3.1 something acres in size. You can see the bottom, again, just to be clear, is outlined and hashed in the, the orange there. So the bottom portion of the property is basically a fully paved site where Rogers Piano has their location in the rear. There's a kind of a serpentine shaped office retail warehouse type building out near the front as well. And then there are three single family homes that are part of this property as well, two of which are vacant, abandoned, and one additional home as well, which is part of the overall property site. So what we have submitted, Madam Chair, board members, as, as we walked through before, is a zoning bylaw amendment that would allow for us to be in a position to utilize the property for multifamily purposes. And I walked through this slide a couple of weeks ago and I'll just walk quickly through it again, but I, I don't think I'm saying anything here that the board is not already aware and familiar with. But when the Town Center Overlay was initially established back in 2006, multifamily was allowed by right at that time. And if you recall, there was a, a cap that existed in the bylaw in terms of so much multifamily square footage that could be built. And what happened is that everyone, as I recall, kind of rushed in at the beginning to try to build multifamily before that cap was reached. And I think town meeting decided in 2010 to, to call a timeout on that, if you would, because of the, but all, all the town was seeing at the time was multifamily proposals. So the, this Town Center is two different sub-districts and those are shown on this map here. It's the two different colors, the peach colored and the purple color, and peach being the central business district and purple being the civic center district. Our, our property is, is the starred property there that you can see at the, towards the bottom of that map on Cambridge Street. So next slide, we'll kind of just show again, what, what we're proposing is establishing a new Town Center multifamily sub-district that would be applied only to the subject property that we're talking about, which is 135 dash 139. And really, the, the concept is, is it's a sub-district that can only be overlaid onto a parcel of land within the central business district by a vote of town meeting. So town meeting ultimately maintains the ultimate control in terms of deciding whether they feel a parcel is, is appropriate for, for multifamily use and, you know, worthy of that consideration. So the underlying so, Town Center Overlay design standards would continue to remain and apply. And the underlying CBD zoning would continue to apply as well in terms of the other uses that could be allowed in order to encourage mixed use development where it's deemed to be appropriate. So I think with respect to our proposal, again, I just want to emphasize, or the, the proposed zoning bylaw proposal, just to emphasize that it's been done in a manner really to allow town meeting to be the ultimate arbiter of whether they feel like a site is, is appropriate or not. I know that there's different points of view about, maybe it should be allowed everywhere again in the Town Center. This isn't prohibiting that. If that's something that the town over time feels like they want to do, then certainly this template could be used in that manner. So, and again, I know there's been a lot of discussion about perhaps, you know, the state housing initiative, the MBTA guidelines and all that. And I don't think anything we're doing here is standing in the way of, of, of future compliance with all that. But again, I was going to turn it over to Peter Carboni at this point to maybe just talk a little bit about some of the things that came up. Couple, couple of things I want to mention before turning it over to Peter. And I, we were able to have a subcommittee meeting earlier this week. I know that was talked about at the last meeting we had two weeks ago about the importance of having a subcommittee to try to, you know, get into the weeds on certain elements. And I know, I, I feel like that was a very productive discussion. There were comments that were raised about traffic and sustainability and, and, and things of that nature, which, you know, I think that we can touch upon. But, you know, one thing I do want to emphasize too is what we heard loud and clear from the beginning and, you know, there was a prior concept that had been contemplated for this site that was going to be a, a much larger proposal and it was going to be rental, a, a different developer at that time. And, you know, the, I think the feedback that was received is that for sale product, it would be something that would be much more well-received by the town. There's a, there's a need for for-sale flat style housing, particularly to appeal to seniors in Burlington that may be looking to downsize and stay in the community. So, and also just the density, you know, having something that was, you know, you know, less tense than, you know, what was talked about before. So I think that we've accomplished a lot of those objectives by, by way of this proposal. And I, I know there's been a lot of talk, just not only in the town, but statewide about the, the need for additional housing. And, you know, we feel that a for-sale flat style product where folks can age in place and not having stairs and, and other things is something that would be. and not having stairs and, and other things is something that would be, uh, appealing to a wide array of, of, of folks in town. So at this point, I'm going to stop babbling and, uh, maybe turn it over to Peter, uh, speak a little bit in terms of the project.
Stu, good evening, Mr. Carboni.
Good evening. Thanks, um, thanks, Mark, and, uh, Madam Chairwoman. Thanks for the time to appear before the board. I, as Mark said, I think we went through a lot of the, um, a lot of the aspects of the project a couple of weeks ago with subcommittee, et cetera. So I think just touching on, on a few points, um, you have the rendering in front of you. But one thing to emphasize is we're very much want to continue to collaborate with the town to try to come up with what we think together is the best use for the site. There's a lot of aspects of this that are in keeping with the master plan, as Mark pointed out, walkability to the town center, expanding the type of uses, yeah, or type of options for people to buy product in town, all those type of things. Um, so it's a, it's a very good transitional use as you go from some of the more commercial uses on Cambridge Road, Cambridge Street, to the, to some of the residential components of projects. So it's, um, I think if you, Jeff, you want to go to the, um, onto the next slide, I think a couple, just a couple of things we wanted to emphasize. We've been hearing, um, from some of the, during some of the subcommittee meetings and the meetings and some live papers, you know, how is some of the traffic going to work and all that kind of things? Because I'd like to just point out a couple of things on how we anticipate the site to really work. The north side of this, or the top side of this site plan is closer to town center. Um, so it should be coming south on Cambridge Road. We envision that top driveway is going to be an, an in-only, a right-in-only, so that you cannot go out that exit left or right. It's going to be one-way in. The other exit or the other driveway to the bottom would be both in and out. And we are still talking to transportation, uh, engineers and so forth, whether or not that'll be a right-out only, not a left-out, or maybe it needs to be restricted during certain times. Um, during the middle of the day, it's, at least from my own experience of being up there, and I don't live next door. Um, but I, many times when I'm up there during the middle part of the day, taking a left isn't bad. Well, there's no doubt there'll be more traffic, you know, that we'll be adding. So at some parts, it may be appropriate to only take a right-hand turn. Again, something to be, to be discussed as we go along. We have not done, we've looked at traffic. We have not done a full-blown, what I would consider, traffic study. Nobody at this point would have, but we have looked at traffic data both pre-COVID and done, and looked at actual traffic counts up and down Cambridge Road, um, to try to determine what are the, the usages along the road today and, and what might we be adding? And very preliminarily, the traffic that we will be adding does not significantly change the wait times at any of the, the localized intersections and so forth, but admittedly, all that still needs to be studied. Um, I think if you, if you look at this chart, the, uh, the key things to point out here is really what our, the, the numbers on the left really indicate what is the current site? What would it generate for traffic under the current use? But I would caution everybody, the current use, if you're over there today, there's very little traffic because there's not much activity on the site. So these are ITE numbers. There's about four hundred vehicle trips that if we get back to leasing, if this site were used for the traditional warehouse and retail, you'd be generating around four hundreds, four hundred vehicle trips per day. For the proposed development that we have, around a little over nine hundred cars per day represents about, I think it's three cars per minute in addition coming up. There's some discussion around the retail on the site of whether or not, is it a good use for the site? Is it, is it, can the site handle retail? Does the town want retail? I think those are things to be discussed. We are not married to doing retail on the site. I, I think it's a good, but not a great retail location. Everybody knows what's happened down at Duffy's property where they're having a hard time. COVID definitely has something to do with that. But if we didn't do retail or converted that retail to, to residential space or some other space, you'd be looking at around seven hundred. So you go from four hundred to, you know, vehicle trips per day if we don't do the retail. But again, I think we all need to decide what's best for the project, for the site, for the town. You know, is it, is it just the residence without any retail or a mix? So again, we're here to talk about those issues to try to work through them with you all. Um, on the next slide, we tried to take a look at what are the uses that could go here if we don't go here? These are two of the type of uses that could go under current zoning. Um, the re, just to clarify, retail, if you're going to go here, can go for, retail use is less than ten thousand square feet or by right. Over ten thousand requires special permits. So if you did a thirty or forty thousand square foot building and you had nine, nine thousand square foot spaces and not one kind of over ten, then I believe this could go in as of right. We tried to come up with the four to spaces for one and give you the open space. So call it forty thousand square feet of retail is what could fit on that site. Again, not fully engineered, but taking, taking the dimensional controls of the bylaw. An office, you're probably looking at somewhere between ninety and a hundred thousand square feet. It's going to park, um, uh, we have a park to, to, our ratio on here is two and a half. I guess we're using two and a half spaces, but I don't know. And so you'd get around ninety, ninety thousand square feet, ninety-six thousand square feet, have the necessary amount of parking as well as open space and coverage. The next slide now shows you, if it's not going to be residential, like what we're doing, it's going to eventually be developed for something, or at least I think it will. Whether it be a year away, ten years, I don't know. But at some point, it's likely calling out the development. These, the numbers here show that if you end up, if you end up doing the retail project, you end up going to about three thousand vehicle trips per day for forty thousand square feet. Again, these are ITE numbers. This is the typical, um, transportation guidelines of what would be created. You can't count anything because there's nothing out there right now. If you did the office project, you'd be at about eleven hundred, a little over eleven hundred vehicle trips per day. So what we're proposing is well on, certainly well under the retail, um, that would generate that most traffic and less than, but not that much less than the office product. Unless we took the retail out, then we'd only be around seven hundred versus eleven or twelve hundred spaces, uh, spaces for, uh, I should say, vehicle trips per day. So traffic will continue to be an issue. We don't think the traffic will be, uh, will be something that's going to significantly impact, um, the current roadway, but it's traffic and there will be more traffic and we all need to continue to study it, do a traffic study and decide how are we going to best exit and enter onto the site? So those things need to still be, um, evaluated. The only other couple of things to, to maybe talk about real quick are, one of them is sustainability. We're building stuff all up and down the East Coast right now. Sustainability is a huge issue and it will continue to be. I don't know if the building will end up entirely electric, but that's kind of where the industry is going. The units themselves will likely be all-electric without, without any kind of, um, uh, carbon or, you know, use for boilers or those type of things. Typically, right now, people would probably be heating or cooling common areas with a boiler type or rooftop system that might have a gas warm-up or startup. My guess is those will probably go, but what I can assure you, assure you of is we're going to be looking at all, you know, everything from the best way, um, to heat, to cool, can we go all-electric? We have a platform in the back above the podium that's going to have a lot of green components to it. Um, there may be solar on the roof here. It may, it may or may not be large enough depending on how much roof area we end up with. But, but we'll be, it's the way the industry is going. I mean, in Boston, where we do a lot of work, all kinds of regulations had acted that by twenty thirty and then twenty fifty, we need to be net-zero carbon neutral. It's happening every place. So we'll be at the forefront of that, of that issue as well. So I think these are just some of the issues that we're hearing about as we, you know, as we have some of the subcommittee meetings and we'll continue to talk, but what we're here to continue the dialogue is what's best for the town? What would you all like to see? We think it's a terrific use. It's a great transitional site, like it's a commercial to the rest, you know, for the rest of the single-family residential outback. Um, but with that, you know, would love to hear any comments and continue the dialogue.
Thank you. Um, so, you know, there, there's quite a bit of comments, um, in the chat, um, talking about, you know, folks are potentially thinking that it's a low estimate of, um, what the traffic count would be. Again, folks, there is not an actual traffic study made at this point in time. Um, you know, I think, again, folks need to understand, you know, our goal for, as a, as, as the planning board, um, is to make sure that, you know, we're putting together the best project possible at this specific location. Uh, Member Spahoe would like to start off, so I'm going to, uh, pass, pass the mic to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd like to go right there. Thank you, Attorney Vaughn and Mr. Carboni for your work on this project. In theory, it looks great and it's a, seems like a good use for the pro, uh, location, but I really have strong concerns about the traffic. And I really want to see a, um, a specific, project-specific traffic study done before we take any vote on this. Because it's just driving down that piece of roadway at rush hour. I mean, I do everything I can to avoid it and I, I don't, I don't know if I could, I mean, let alone want to try and live there. So I really want to see a hard, hard look, just not cursory looks at this traffic. I want it, I want strong data. I want, um, a site-specific, project-specific, solid traffic study done before we move forward to this because it's a huge concern, not only from me. I share it from abutters and residents and people who've reached out to me who have never even asked about a planning board meeting before. So a lot of that is a credit to some of the things going on in town, like the Burlington buzz. We like to see, I'm loving seeing the involvement from the local community and hopefully this continues in a wave develops of, um, more involvement from the community, better voter turnout. But I'm hearing it loud and clear from people that voted for me that we want to make sure that the traffic, we can't just say, no, we think it's going to be okay. We want to be sure and I want to be sure. And, um, I, it's imperative and we, it's, it's, I don't think it's negoti, we have to check it. So that's my comment. And again, I appreciate your efforts. Um, and, uh, I do, again, like it and in theory seems great and would be a good use of the site. But I just want to make a hundred percent sure we're doing the right thing and that we take a strong, hard, comprehensive, detailed look at this traffic. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Members Spahoe. Uh, and, and just for the record, um, I don't think, we're, we're definitely not making a decision on, on this matter this evening, so.
No, I didn't say that. I said before we ever even take a vote.
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying that for the public. I, I want, I want folks to know that, you know, we're, we are taking a hard look at that because, you know, like you, I've received plenty of phone calls and I know other members of the board have, have received a lot of feedback. Um, and the public has made numerous comments, um, not only, you know, personally through emails and texts, but, you know, via Facebook and social media and.
Respectfully, Madam Chair, I'd like to hear the, the applicant's answer on this one, because it's very important.
Yeah, maybe I, maybe I can jump in first and then turn it to Peter, but, uh, Mark Vaughn and, uh, ju- just so everyone's aware, I mean, what, what is before the board now and ultimately before town meeting be a rezoning to allow for a project to then be proposed? So, you know, right now, the zoning doesn't exist to even consider a multifamily concept on the property. So the, 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 the bylaw is being proposed to at least allow a framework to be in place so that we could then submit applications to the planning board for the construction of the building. And pursuant to your site plan requirements, I mean, you know, some of the things that you look at are, are a, a whole host of things that neighbors and others would be focused on, one of which is traffic. It's traffic safety. So, uh, Mike, I'm not saying that we can't get further into the weeds on traffic now as part of the rezoning, but I do want to just remind everyone that, uh, this is not, this is the be, beginning of the process. If the rezoning is passed, we still have to go through a pretty rigorous process to ultimately get approval and, uh, traffic would be, would certainly be part of that process, but.
Thank you.
I'll be asked before you is, will you consider uses that potentially have a lower traffic impact than those that are as of right today? That's really the ask.
Excuse me, Mr. Trushen, uh, first and foremost, I'd like to get through the board's comments before we go through, um, the rest.
I'm sorry.
Nope, that's quite all right. Uh, Vice Chair Gaffney.
Thank you. Uh, um, I, I just want to kind of like repeat that a little bit. So this is for town meeting in May, right, the, the anticipation that, and it's, it's now March. And, uh, I think we, we talked about last time, uh, Member Pemba and I probably spent four or five meetings just to get the, the building in back, just the way it is, not necessarily rezoning. Um, so, you know, to, to get documentation on this to town meeting, it's going to be published in April for a May town meeting. Um, an option here may be instead of rushing this through, because every, every, you know, I think someone here has said words count, to get the language correct on this. Um, you know, and, and this may be rushing to get this to May town meeting with all the concerns that are here. Uh, and then the implications of that going forward. Something that I, that I thought about over the past couple of weeks was with regard to spot zoning. I think someone mentioned it the last time. Has, have we gone to, uh, town council with regard to spot zoning here? Or because it's four, four parcels, this spot zoning doesn't apply?
Spot zoning doesn't apply is my understanding because there are several other parcels in name, you know, in neighboring parcels that also have multifamily uses. And, uh, Kristin, correct me if I'm wrong, we have discussed that with town council.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, there, there's several neighbor, neighboring parcels. So this did not necessarily apply to spot zoning. Kristin, is that correct?
Well, just to quickly, I mean, spot zoning, do you have a use that's unlike the uses around it? Um, and second, is the, what you're allowing on this property something that you're not allowing elsewhere? Um, is kind of the two, two kind of questions you're looking at. So the first question, that there are multifamily projects directly abouting these properties, um, and/or a couple, you know, a little bit down the street, as well as within the district. The second piece, um, that you're, they're proposing this amendment to the overlay and, and proposing at this time for those provisions that they're putting in place to go over these particular grouping of properties, but it doesn't preclude any other properties also being included in that. So your first kind of big test for spot zoning fail. Um, spot zoning is also super hard in general, um, to really prove unless it's really obvious and in your face. Um, I haven't, um, with town council, um, over as a general question, we've talked about it, but we haven't, um, can, we haven't finalized just general comments about the amendment here with town council. So I don't have a, a memo from town council on that particular piece. But I can say very confidently, having been doing this long enough and having that question come up quite, just enough that we've gone through this, that the, the tests really have to, um, to pass on both fronts and, and they really don't. So I don't think spot zoning is at all a concern with this project at this, in this location.
Okay. Kristin, if you could actually follow through and, and just reach out to town council and get that, uh, true confirmation on which way, uh, they.
Yes, no, and that's certainly ongoing. It's just we're not prepared for this evening.
I understand. I, I just want to make sure that, that we're asking the question.
Of course.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Gaffney, anything else?
Yeah, thank you. Just a question. So I've got two things here on density. So nothing's, uh, so there must be the language in the proposed, uh, uh, change in the bylaw here or the new overlay district or whatever we're trying to do here. Um, so the details of that, uh, you know, what's, what's the proposed density? Because what you do here, and then if you extend this to other parcels in the town center, with all good intentions, like we originally did, uh, you tend to, you, we may be not where we think we want to be. Um, and Mike, another question is who on the, the planning board is on the subcommittee? I don't think we mentioned, we asked for that last time, but I didn't know who's on that.
Um, I believe Member Pemba, uh, is on the subcommittee. Um, I did attend the last meeting. Uh, I believe Member LaRue also attended the last meeting. Um, but for the actual subcommittee, I believe it's Member Pemba. And is there another member, Kristin? Do you know? Or is it just Member Pemba?
Um, I thought it was Member Pemba and Member LaRue, um, and then.
Barra is, I'm sorry, Barra, uh, Member.
The Chair, I, but, you know, we have, um, a lot of things if that's not the case and/or if it was Member Pemba and there wasn't a second appointment, um, we're certainly all open for that. We did let all of you know that there was a subcommittee if you had wanted to join, so.
Understood. Uh, Member LaRue, I believe you also attended as well.
I attended. I confess, I don't remember if I was officially on the subcommittee, but I attended. And if you want me to be on the subcommittee, I am happy to be on it.
We all wear a lot of hats and I think that people forget that when, you know, when you remember the planning board, it's not just the, the typical two meetings a month. It's, it's, it's a labor of love for the community, so.
So if you want me on the subcommittee, I'll do it.
Yeah, thank you. Maybe just to remind everybody that, you know, the, the assumption here is this is going to go to, to town meeting in May. If we don't vote on it and planning, and planning staff advisory forum, if we don't take it up to vote, then it doesn't go to town meeting. Is that correct?
Uh, the planning board is to hold a hearing and to make a recommendation. Um, the town meeting cannot act on a zoning proposal unless, um, the planning board votes and/or unless they close the public hearing in sixty-five days of past.
Okay.
So, and there was, and the action of closing the public hearing is, is with the planning board. So that, that is generally correct.
Yeah, thank you. Because I, you know, my concern here is, is a very important zoning change. important zoning change, probably more important than the one I've seen with my ten years here on the, on the planning board. And to get this, I know that the applicant got this fairly late in the game. You said you've had it for over a month or so. And we've got it, and we've got a, there's gonna be a publication in April to get it to May. I think, you know, the option is there. Everyone should really think seriously about are we at a point where it makes sense to go to May or, you know, let's breathe a little bit and, and, and let's maybe just have this go to the next town meeting with everything, every single, you know, and I know that our, our zoning uh bylaw review committee will look at every single word, which is going to be difficult uh to do in a short period of time, in my opinion. And the only other thing is I just remember a comment that uh Mr. Eiler uh mentioned the last time is, you know, and I've heard this basically a couple of times this past week in my day job, is what problem are we trying to solve here? Maybe Mr. Eiler hears that in, in his, in, in private life as well, right? If, if we're both in similar uh, similar work uh activity. So in, and I think in this case is what we're trying to do is try to, to for this particular site, and that's why I get back to spot zoning, is what are we trying to solve here? A very difficult site. And you know, what's the best way to do that versus the rest of the town, if this can, if this applies to the rest of the town overlay. Uh then you get into a different thing, what we're trying to solve. We're not trying to, if you look at the master plan, we're not, I don't think it says that we need more housing, right? So we're looking for more affordable housing for seniors and young families. Uh so again, that's, you know, as we, we look at the three hundred units over, you know, over a third half and, and another, they can think they want another three hundred over there. And we've got the new ones over at Corporate Place and we've got a couple hundred units over here and another hundred here. It's just the, the, you know, you, you, we're going in percentages. Uh so that, you know, that really, if you look at the master plan, which hasn't been approved yet, you know, we, we kind of should look at that in regard to what we do here and, and look at the density of this. And maybe take a, take a look and see what, uh what's the best fit there. And the green space is not there uh today. It won't be there tomorrow because of the building, but you know, that's type of things from a, from a, maybe a higher level to look at that as we go. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gaffney. Uh you know, uh, uh, I agree with you a hundred and ten percent. Here's my concern. Is that if there is no zoning change and they just had a buy right building, they could build retail. And they could build something else. So I think, you know, depending on, you know, what's being presented in front of us, it's i- it's, you know, it's on us to understand and, you know, I, I guess, guide whoever the new owner is to put forth something that is going to benefit the community. But, you know, as during our last meeting, um you know, with, with the, you know, with the applicant, they had flat out said, if this does not make financial sense to us, we're gonna walk. And then a new owner is gonna come into play. So, you know, it's not a threat. It's that, that is our reality. Um so I just wanted to add that in. I don't know that they're necessarily running to the race line for, you know, for May. Um you know, again, it's a numbers game, I think, for whatever's gonna be financially feasible for the owner. That doesn't mean I'm for the owner or for something else. That, that's, that's not my position. I just uh am stating facts and what was stated during the last meeting for those who were present. Um I'm gonna pass it off to uh Member Leru. Um you're next in line.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have a number of questions and comments and, and I want to just tell the proponents, I'm not expecting answers tonight. It's this is gonna be a, a longer process and so there's sort of more things to think about. I do want to echo uh Member Gaffney's concerns about trying to get this done for May. Um I do think we may need more time and we should probably consider um taking that time so that we are doing this the right way and have it come in September instead. Um so then I have a bunch of comments and they're a little bit disjointed because I've been taking notes as we go. Um yes, we need a traffic study. That's really important. Um one of the things that Member Gaffney was just saying is, you know, what is the, the need that we're trying to fill? And he said, it, it's not agreed that we necessarily need more housing, but there has been a lot of discussion around the need for more affordable housing and more senior housing. Um to that end, I would suggest that if this plan were to go forward, that we would need to discuss something greater than fifteen percent affordable. And I understand that um that's the bare, the bare minimum requirement, that we can't force you to do more, but it's, this is a negotiation because you're looking for a zoning change. This is not a buy right use. So I think that's something that we're gonna need to discuss in greater detail. Um I'd like to find out, well, all the comments I'm hearing from people who are calling and writing, um the biggest concern is that it's just too many, too many apartments. It's too dense, it's too large. And that's gonna cause a, an enormous traffic problem. I mean, this is a very difficult site from a traffic standpoint. So it's clear that, I mean, this is a zoning change request to town meeting. It's not a site plan. And if this proponent goes to town meeting and gets the zoning change, they could come back with something different. It doesn't have to look like the renderings that we're looking at tonight, because that could very well change. And I'd like to to think that there would be some other options that we would want to consider. I think that neighbors would probably be more comfortable with something that had fewer units, perhaps townhouse style units. If you do townhouse style units, you would have fewer of them in a lower impact, but higher price point. So hopefully the economics could work out. I don't know. I'm sure that's something that would take quite a bit of work for you all to figure out. Um on the idea of, you had mentioned, um the gentleman with the the rendering that showed how the circu- traffic would circulate through the site, mentioned perhaps having only right-hand turns out at certain times of day. This is more a question for staff. I'm not sure that's enforceable, so we should find out about that. I'm not sure if it's something that could be enforced. Um when we talked about um everything being electric and, and um that's wonderful. I'm glad to hear that. I was wondering if you were planning to put electric charging stations in there for the people who live there. And I think that covered most of my questions, but my overall statement is that I am deeply concerned about this. I agree with the people who are calling me and writing to me that this is too dense. Ninety units in this location with the traffic that we already have is very concerning. So um it's gonna take a lot of convincing, I think, not just of me, but for a town meeting as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, point, point of information, if I could.
Uh please, uh well, let me get, is there something to add to what Barbara had said? Otherwise.
No, it's, it's not an addition. It's just a clarification from staff.
No, by all means.
Um uh to, to the staff. This is, this is a recommendation to town meeting to change this site so that it will allow residential units. I'm, I'm having vision problems, so every once in a while I can't see things correctly, sorry. Um but i- in this recommendation to town meeting, do we call out a number of residential units per acre or not?
Um we don't, we don't have a number of residential units per acre proposed in the zoning. However, with the zoning, the zoning is gonna allow for that that box that you can build in terms of, you know, between buffers and height and setbacks, et cetera. So
Okay, okay, that's.
In that is.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Whether you're small units or big units, or it's gonna, you have, you know, say you have a thirty thousand square foot box, how you divvy that up into units is gonna be up to.
Okay, the point, the point I was trying to make is we're, we're viewing this as if it was a site plan rather than a recommendation to town meeting, cut, because if we recommended positively to town meeting that yes, this site could allow resi- for residential units, and they came to us and wanted to put a hundred units on it, and we said it would only support fifty, there is nothing that keeps us from, from granting a permit for fifty rather than a hundred units. Am I correct?
So I want to clarify a little bit in terms of we really, uh to, to the point you're trying to make, I think, is that we really do need to be looking at what this project is, and I think it's, do you all overall think housing might be a good idea here? That's a question because the use itself is certainly under discussion. The second piece is the mechanism in which to build up, build out that use. And that's the um provisions that are being proposed in this multifamily overlay within the town center. So what those provisions, what, what go into those provisions? Um that will then dictate what you are able to do is something we should be discussing here, because that's directly related to the recommendation to town meeting on the provisions and the zoning for which then this would be rezoned into. Um so and, and so I think, you know, but whether it's the dimen- certain dimension requirements, I mean, whether we talk about unit count or not, unit count or per, per acre density, it's something we certainly can talk about. It's not proposed right now. Um the percent affordability discussion, I mean, all those pieces, it's what's in the regulation right now and what should be in this regulation if we're favorable to moving forward a residential type use on this property. And that's, that's really what we're, we need to be focusing um the discussion. And, and I, it's easy to get into kind of more site plan discussion and, and I think we're gonna hop over the line a little bit. It's just, I think we do need to be careful to not get too too deep into, you know, the travel ways and the parking spaces and exactly that. And to the question of the left turn enforceable or not, I think that is, it's a good question. I, I think we need to think about it in general, of development occurring on this property. But that question's gonna come up whether it's an office or it's a retail or it's a housing or it's an anything. Um and we know that there are things that are allowed to be built on this property. So um it's a good, you know, it's a good question. It's just where is that question best placed, I think, is what we.
Right. But unless town meeting passes a zoning change that has a specific number of residential units per acre. If they just pass a zoning change that says this can be multifamily residential. All they do is pass that, and then the proponent comes to us. We, we, we issue a permit with a specific number of units. So we would at that time determine whether the site could support fifty, hundred, whatever. Correct? That's the point I'm trying to make. Because uh we, no matter what we do here, unless it is included in the zoning change, it's, it doesn't we're gonna have that same discussion again in issuing a permit or not issue a permit with the amount of units that we believe that site could support.
Right, uh but I think uh Member Cavino, to your point, you know, where we continue to, you know, but in multiple, you know, a lot of us have said, we want a traffic study. If we said, you know, if they came to us and said, uh this site would support X amount of units with this traffic study, that's gonna either sway us one way or another to give us our recommendation. So.
Well, not the recor- but not the recommendation to town meeting, because we're not recommending a specific number of units to town meeting at this time.
Right, but the proponent could definitely come back to us and say, okay, well, you know, we could change it to multifamily. And then we could say, okay, well, we only, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, I'm just kind of thinking out loud here. If we said, okay, this could be a multifamily, you know, a multifamily parcel. They bring us a traffic study and say, okay, thirty units can go here.
Before, excuse me, before or after they go to town meeting?
Well, I'd like to think that.
What do you?
I'd like to think they're gonna give us a traffic study before town meeting. Because if it doesn't make economical sense for them, then they're not gonna follow through with the project. So I don't want to change zoning if we don't have a proponent that's gonna follow through with an actual project.
Right, but unless we convince town meeting to put a specific number of units on the zoning that passed, and I don't know how we can do that.
But we can't. Right, but we can't do that without a traffic study.
Right, but we, we're, we're not asking. Okay, I'm, I'm.
Can I offer a solution or suggestion for the chair?
Sure.
Raise one thing. Happy to do the traffic study. Happy to do it before it goes to town meeting. I think the other thing that we would do is sign a development agreement with you, so you know what you're gonna get. So we would approach town meeting with a development agreement in hand on what exactly we, I don't want to go forward. I don't want to go to town meeting without this board being a hundred percent comfortable that you all get behind what, what we're proposing. So if we can't get there, we won't get there. But if we can get there, I'd like everybody to say, we work hard, we think this is a good use, we're all for this. And here's what, here's the natural development agreement signed by us that says, this is the number of units, this is how we're gonna do it. Um if we need to have traffic things in there, whether it's right turnouts, we'll, we'll figure all that stuff out. Um what I really, and, and a lot of you were doing this tonight, and I appreciate it. What we really need is feelings about residential in this location, because we can work with you on if it's, if it's too many units, let's talk about, you know, what feels right. But is the feels right indicative of the traffic? Because if I said to you, if we don't go there and a retail use goes there and it's three thousand cars a day, you're gonna say, we're never gonna allow that. I get it. But that's the allowed use by right. So if you said to me, it's a beautiful building or it can be, we'd like to see something like that, but maybe it's too big, then work with us candidly and openly to say, I think this is what we could get behind. But if you said to me, here's something to shoot for, shoot for traffic that, you know, isn't gonna completely crowd up our roads because we think ninety-eight is going to. Well, what will? Was it forty? Is it sixty? Is it eighty? It's not a hundred. But what, you know, help, help us through that. We have restrictions time-wise for the real estate deal that make it very hard for me to go past. May impossible, no. We're not gonna jam something down your throats that you guys aren't happy with. So when I start hearing questions about spot zoning and traffic, I get a lot of, I get these negative connotations in my mind that people just want to stop the project. If that's the case, just tell me you don't like residential. If you like the idea, let's work together to try to figure it out.
So what if I was to say to you, what's the minimum amount of units that you can put in this parcel that you'll still see a profit and you still want to move forward?
And what kind of units? Because I think.
Yeah, one, two, one, two, three bedroom.
Or townhouse versus flat, versus.
So the town, so uh I don't know if I can give you a direct answer on that yet, but I will get you an answer by the next meeting. Um because it's gonna be a function of like, I'll give you an example, townhouses would provide maybe a different type of unit, but you might get more kids. And you might get, you'll have to deal with that with schooling kids, and you might say, we want that or we don't want that. I personally don't. I think that all the products that are being done right now, there's really none in Burlington I know of. The flat units in this location are what the market is looking for, because it's single floor, almost maintenance free kind of living. Um the townhouses, I'm not convinced this is a great townhouse location. Do I think some would sell? Yeah, absolutely. And there could be a mix. We, we've talked about this internally as soon as today. Um is there a way to mix in some of these? And there might be. So if you were to say to me, well, that could be important, I hear that. Let us take a shot at maybe trying to incorporate some of those in. What I'm, again, what I'm really trying to figure out is, is it the, is it just residential, you just don't want to see it in this location for whatever reason? And I get it, and I expect it if that's the case. Because something is eventually gonna go here. And if you don't want one more car coming off that site, there's probably not one use I can think of that's gonna generate it, because the use that's on there right now is so innocuous, because there's really very little traffic coming off of it.
Nothing. Right, and I. I don't think that you, you're hearing that. I think that you're hearing, you know, like I said, I originally started with there is something that's gonna be built here. And you're hearing that ninety units is a lot.
Yep.
And you're also hearing that, you know, what else could we put there? And you're also hearing, what's the minimum amount of units? So uh I don't think that the question is, or, or I don't think the statement is, we don't want residential. It's what's the minimum impact that we're gonna have on the community and the traffic and the neighbors? And, and that's, that's where we're going. Um I'm gonna pass it off to uh Member Pembra, where he is um one of the the focal points of, of this specific project.
Okay, well, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I couldn't agree more with most of the statements that have been made tonight. Um I'm basically gonna reiterate a couple of statements that I've made in the, in the couple of subcommittee meetings that we've had so far. Is that everybody just needs to keep in mind what we should be thinking about right now is what can be put on that site by right versus what this project is and what we want to make this project into. Because a buy right use is a buy right use. That's a fact. The next fact is the site will be built on, whether we like it or not, unless the town decides to buy the site. And I don't think the town is in the position or inclined what.
And I don't think the town is in the position or inclined whatsoever to purchase the site. Had the opportunity to do it at Build a Nineteen, they didn't do it. So I don't think that's even an option at this point in time. So we do know it's going to get redeveloped. And the next step is we actually want the site to be redeveloped. We don't want it to sit in its current state. It's a sea of pavement. It's a dilapidated building and it has nothing, nothing on that site that is in line with the vision of the overlay. If I think back to the, to the initial part of the overlay, when we were developing the overlay. Quite honestly, there was a, a, a really strong school of thought. That there should, that the density, that, that the residential density in the downtown to support a viable downtown. Should be way higher than what it is right now. And, you know, my inclination. And, and this was a, a point of contention with a lot of the members on the overlay when we, before, while we were putting the overlay together. There was a point of contention, mine was, we, we, we build the residential pieces at a time. So we start out with, in other words, they, they, the, the school of thought and, and a lot of the, you know, the, the publications out there are saying that you need. You know, twenty-five percent of your downtown needs to be residential. You know, there was higher numbers, there were other numbers being thrown around. My thoughts were, we start slow and we build up. If we need more, we build more. This is a perfect opportunity to be able to do that. You know, once, what happened was initially when we put the overlay in place. There was a rally, everybody scrambled to, to, to pull the permits to build the residential housing. And it scared a lot of people in town because that was what was getting built first. And, and the thought, you know, by seeing that initially was, we're not going to see, you know, the retail built the way we intended the retail to be built down there. Well, no, it was just the fact that it was more desirable for them to build the residential down there. And quite honestly, it's actually probably to create a viable downtown. You should be building the residential down there. And this type of a, an approach. Where it's actually when people say spot zoning, not spot zoning, rather than changing the whole downtown overlay. To allow for multifamily and all these sites. This is actually a perfect opportunity to be able to control the amount of residential. That gets built in the downtown and do it a piece at a time as we need the residential. So again, I, I think, you know, the facts are, it's going to be built. We do want it to be built. We've got a developer here and a, you know, an applicant who actually. Of, of all of the projects we've done in the downtown, I think they're probably the only one who has actually read the, the overlay, the, the bylaw. And come in with something that has a, a, you know, a, a particular semblance of what we, what our, you know, envision was for the downtown. So it's not speaking against the project, it's not speaking in favor of the project. What I'm saying is we need to approach it, understanding. Like Bill had said, and like some of the bills said, what are we trying to accomplish here? We're trying to redevelop a pro, project, we're trying to redevelop a site. We're trying to create a viable downtown. And I think, you know, many people have pointed to the fact that Builder Nineteen is vacant. Well, okay, so that means we probably shouldn't build this whole site as retail. Right? Maybe there's not enough residential down there to support the retail that we have now. So we don't want to build it all as retail for a couple of reasons. Number one, maybe we don't have the residents to support it and that's. And that's, and that is shown very. You know. The Builder Nineteen site. And number two, that it's been explained to us that, you know, that not the traffic, it hasn't been a traffic study, but the traffic. Numbers that came out have said that, you know, strictly retail, which is about allowed by light, by right down there. Is a way more intense use than a strictly residential would be. Now, again, a strictly residential is not in line with the vision of the overlay either. So I think, I think in my mind, the, the, the conclusion there is that the right use for this site is a mix. So what is that mix? What's the best mix that we have on that site? But I think it's, in my opinion, it's, it, the best use is a mix of residential and retail. We just need to find numbers now. But we've got an applicant in front of us that is. I've never seen anyone more willing to try to work with the town to get what we want. And I think that's, I'd be hard pressed to let someone like that walk out the door. And, and, and not at least be the, the one that has a shot of developing that site. Because you don't know what's going to go in there after that and what's going to go in there by right. I think we need to figure out what traffic, and I think it's important, and that's been said by everybody here. We need to get, talk to engineers and figure out the real traffic of what this is going to bring. What the buy right is going to bring and then try to mitigate it and figure out what the best use and the best mix is going to be. And at the same time, explore options. Like a road, you know, a road going out the back side of this and out into a signalized intersection, which they've already expressed that they are willing to. To look at as well. So there's a lot of options here and. I think we need to approach it from that standpoint, rather than the negatives of. Well, it's too dense, it's too this, it's too that, because the reality is we, we don't control the site. You know, there's, there's, there's a much more dense use that's allowed by right than what is being proposed right now. And I think the applicant has also expressed the willingness to mitigate and, and maybe, you know. Reduce what we potentially have in front of us right now. That's all I want to say. Again, it's not, it's not speaking in favor of this project, not speaking against. I think we just need to be grounded on our approach to this thing.
Thank you, member, have a, two things I want to say. Looking at the comments, the town has approached the original owner about purchasing that land. That was not something that was favorable for the slackboard. I can't speak to the specifics, but it was approached at one point in time. So, you know, we can't tell people what to do with their property. So I, I will say that. The other thing is that folks had, some folks have mentioned retail on the old Building Nineteen site. And there are only two units left. So it is fairly full from what used to be. And I anticipate those two units will probably, you know. Probably leased within the near future as, you know, more folks are actually leaving their house and. You know, the, the new sense of normal is, exists. So I'm going to pass it back to Barbara. She had wanted to make a comment.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quick thing. First of all, I also appreciate the flexibility that this applicant is showing. I think one of the things, as I said before, that frightened everyone was the idea of ninety units. And knowing that you're willing to discuss smaller numbers and different configurations is very, it's great to hear. I also think that the idea that we could come up with a development agreement. Before this went to town meeting is great because I think it's very hard for town meeting to make this decision if they don't really know exactly what it is they're getting. However, that will take longer and I think that might mean we can't go to May. How, I think that would be a good thing, but we might have to consider that in the schedule.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Paul Raymond.
Of course, Member Clerk Irwin, please.
Yes, just this, you've been, I've been listening and we've been discussing this for like two or three hours now. When this initially came up, I said, that's a very unique site. There it is open, it's almost downtown. And really, do you get that kind of an opportunity? And I think my own opinion was that this discussion that's been going on. Should be going on before the planning board. I think that this, before a decision is made. Should be brought to the planning board. And allow them, along with the community, to completely vet this. And see if we can come up with some consensus as to what the best use would be. Both acceptable to, of course, to the property owner. But what the town of Burlington would want there. And the way you can find that out is to have public hearings with the, with the planning board. And I don't see any reason to rush on it, other than of course, the property owner wants to get their money out of it. But that's my plea, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you. So folks, we've, we're coming up on an hour and a half on this specific topic. As you know, our planning board meetings can go quite lengthy. Is there anyone that has something new and pertinent to say that has not been discussed during? Previous meetings, subcommittee meetings, or at this point in time? John, I know you're waving your hand and I hope, hope, hope that it's something new.
Oh, it's a good one.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, and, and, you know, certainly from the previous meeting, it was good to get a few new ideas there. First, I'll point out, it, look, it's very clear, everyone understands it's going to be redeveloped. We want it to be nicer than it is. From my point of view, adding some residential there is fine, that's not even the issue. But I think we're being given a false choice here of it needs to be this, this proposal. Or, you know, be ready for a big retail, you know, traffic jam. You know, regardless of, you know, I, I think it's clear that the retail is rentals or leases are, are going slowly. And we shouldn't be put into the false choice of we have to rush or else all of a sudden there's going to be a million retail things there. So I, I would not want us to succumb to that self-generated pressure. You know, that, yes, it can be done retail by right, but I, I don't think that's going to happen next week if all of a sudden we don't agree to this. It's a nice looking development proposal, that's not our only goal. Our only, you know, our goal isn't to maximize developer profit, obviously. And I don't think our town's goal has ever been that we want to create more housing that's approximately the same price as a house. You know, based on what we heard at the, the previous meeting. Yes, there's fifteen percent affordable, but otherwise they're, they're marginally cheaper than a whole houses. So I, I think the real issue here is we're putting the cart before the horse. The town should define a plan of what it wants for a multifamily zone, assuming that we want to have one, and what the rules are. Maybe this development fits in that plan or maybe it doesn't. But the wrong thing to do is to start with a proposal from a developer and build our town goal around that. You know, we've got over twenty-six thousand Burlington, more than twenty-two hundred per square mile. We're not an underdeveloped town. The goal is not to jam in the maximum number of people that will fit here. You know, we, you know, it's been brought up that there's this new MGL forty A, section three A. The MBTA requirements or MBTA town requirements. And that implies a lot of things. So I would say, whatever we're going to do. If it involves multifamily, we should make sure that we do, we think about it in that context. So in particular, under that, that law, we're required to have two thousand units multifamily. There has to be at least one twenty-five contiguous acre plot that fits within that zone. Which this one, by the way, would not work with. We could not expand this out to twenty-five acres. And so we should think about it in the context of that. Do we want to make our multifamily zone as dense as possible? So we limit the size of the multifamily zone, that would be one approach. In which case we'd say, sure, put a hu, a thousand units here. Do we want to make it as low density as possible so that it's spread around town? And it's not in all one place. It could be as low as fifteen units per acre under the section three A. So we could, you know, under that, it would suggest that if this was, you know, approximately fifty-ish units, it would. It would meet the, the section three A requirements. So we should think about ahead of time, which, which target are we trying to hit here? One thing is perfectly clear, you know, there's this suggestion, why don't we just turn on the multifamily? That used to be there. You know, it's not at all obvious that length, you know, multifamily zoning language from eleven years ago is, you know, appropriate for today. Maybe it is, but, you know, it, I, I doubt that's likely. So, you know, and just in terms of timing, I believe, if I, if I've got this right, I believe zoning bylaws need, the, the proposals need to be. The language needs to be available forty-five days before a town meeting. Which would make that due approximately March twenty-eighth. So there's really only four weeks before the language would have to be set. For an entire new zoning bylaw for this to make its town meeting. So it, you know, strikes me as a tight timeline. I would say, I would personally be strongly against any proposal that. Did not explicitly specify an upper bound on what are the number of units per acre that we're willing to allow? In a multifamily district. It doesn't mean that this would have to be that maximum number. But, you know, I, I think town meetings should know what they're agreeing to before any proposal is made. So I, I think that would be a key thing that we, we understand what the upper bound is and that's put in the bylaw. As opposed to, well, you know, kind of work it out whenever, you know, a proposal comes along and see if we think it seems appropriate or not. So, you know, it, anyway, my key point is, let's make a plan and see if this fits in it. As opposed to creating a plan based on some developer's proposal. That's really the exact wrong order. Thank you very much, Brendan.
Thank you. Brady, what do we have on time on this?
I believe we're just about at one and a half hours, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. We're not deciding tonight. Are there any butters present that would like to speak? Greg Foster, are you the only a butter?
My wife's also here, so she's.
So you got, do you both want to speak or, and you're welcome to, but.
Well, I'm a possible.
Mr. Foster, please, and then this will be the last comment for the evening. Going forward, if there's anyone else that would like to discuss this, please feel free to contact me directly or any, any other members of the planning board. Also, they can contact planning staff, you know, we're always. Available to, to discuss certain matters, so, or I should say, all matters. Mr. Foster, please.
Okay, thank you for giving me some time. I have a couple of questions. One of them is kind of a legal question. The other is about some town stuff. I do appreciate some of the members really being concerned about the traffic as being in a butter. And knowing, and somebody who works from home, so I can look out my window at pretty much any time of the day. And see what's going on in traffic. The traffic's already pretty bad, except for very short windows during the day. And it's even worse now because everybody has weird schedules because they're working from home. So you can randomly have, you know, a backup at the light at one o'clock, then you're like, what's going on? Or at ten thirty. So looking real closely at what the current traffic is and how this could affect, how any building in this could affect. There's a lot of talk about this by right. But when we're talking about this by right, does that only preclude to the Rogers Piano site? Because there are single family homes there, which are those zoned to be able to be converted from single family homes to retail? Because wouldn't, under whatever law is now, the retail only be able to go really into the Rogers Piano site if this person backed out? That's just a question in terms of that.
Christian, can you speak to that?
Yeah, so the town center is comprised of about a hundred and twenty-seven acres. It's an overlay over underlying zoning. There's two districts, the civic center and the central business district within the town center overlay. As an overlay district, there are a number of uses that are additive to the underlying zoning districts. So therefore, if you're, if you are within the town center. There is the ability to have commercial uses where single family homes exist. There are a couple of protections within the district for single family homes. But certainly you can, the single family homes that are there have the ability to, to go, to have a commercial uses. The same can be said for where you guys are. It's, it's, it happens to be multifamily residential project if. And it's fairly new, but, you know, in many years to come, if people decided it wanted to be a commercial area, it could be a commercial area. So that, there is possibilities there. Just also wanted to mention that in the town center, there is a possibility for single family homes, two family homes and three family homes. The multifamily piece did get repealed back in two thousand and ten, I think. From the, it was by right, then it was special. From the, it was buy right, then it was special permit, then it was repealed. And there wasn't a density cap per acre originally. There was an overall percentage of overall square footage in the town center, and that was, that was there because it was 2004 or '05 when we created the overlay, if you guys recall. 2004 and '05 was the height of the housing bubble before it burst. So it was everyone, everywhere was building housing, and we really wanted to make sure we were supporting a strong commercial house within the town center with housing to also support that. So, anyway, just to answer the question, yes, diverse uses are allowed within the town center overlay overall.
Thank you.
And then another question, and this just came because I heard of talking about spot zoning. But is this type of zoning bylaw we're doing actually legal under law because of this being in an overlay district? I was reading something in the Mass Law, just I was looking about Mass Law. It's Part 1, Title 7, Chapter 48, Section 4. Is how, within an overlay district, everything has to be uniform? So if you're letting one property be different within that, that, that district, then the district is in uniform. So can we actually do this based off of Mass Law? And I know I had sent this to you guys this earlier today, to look at whether or not this actually violates that law or not?
Yeah, just simply, no, it doesn't, because what you're doing here is you're creating district options, and then you're choosing what to zone into it. If we wanted, if this is a few parcels to zone into it, if we wanted to say, zone 20 parcels into it, it's universal to those districts that you're zoning it into, and therefore, it meets the uniformity requirement. But you don't have to all at one time do the whole district to have it, have it meet that provision. So, and but, it's not saying this, this parcel, and only this parcel has the opportunities. It's any parcel that you choose to zone into this has all these equal opportunities. So that's the quick answer on that one.
And then, I guess, my last question is actually around town services. With the lifetime units going in, I don't know, what's that, 200, 300 units? With what's just been built on technology, the apartments at Building 19, with these coming in, can our town services handle all this extra building? Are we going to need another police-fire station out of this? Are we going to need another, are there unintended costs of continuing all this building that we probably need to kind of look at and stop now before we approve any of this, to make sure, hey, can our current service level services? Because we know our police station's falling apart, so there could be, you know, that needs to be fixed. But do we have enough of these services to handle the influx of units? When you're talking, you know, 200 apartments, that's, you know, could be up to 600 people. You know, 98 units, you're talking 300 more people. I don't know, the Building 19 and the other apartments that just come on. Can our services handle this? And is this something we should be approving because we don't have the services to go forward?
I think this is definitely something that we're going to continue to look at. With everything that we review, we always have a review from the police, from the fire station, from economic development, from all the committees, you know, pretty much across the board. So yes, that is something that will be reviewed. Again, we've already approached over an hour and a half. We are on Page 7 of 14.
Madam Chair, I'd like to appreciate Mr. Carbone's desire to work with us, and I would like to work with him, and also make a motion to continue this matter, the Planning Board meeting of March 17.
Second. Thank you.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Espejo.
Yes.
Member Imtamba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Thank you all for your time. truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Work with you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Items 7H through 7K together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Espejo.
Yes.
Member Imtamba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Thank you. Item H is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.9, hazardous and toxic materials, chemicals, used storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the zoning bylaws for Burlington Woods Drive. The Gutierrez Company is the applicant. Item I is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.11, generation or storage of hazardous waste, limited to the volumes classified as a very small quantity, generator BSQG of the zoning bylaws for Burlington Woods Drive. The Gutierrez Company is the applicant. Item J is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.12, generation of or storage of hazardous waste in excess of the volumes classified as a very small quantity, generator BSQG of the zoning bylaws for Burlington Woods Drive. The Gutierrez Company is the applicant. Item K is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.15, storage and disposal of oils, fuels, petroleum products of the zoning bylaws for Burlington Woods Drive. The Gutierrez Company is the applicant. Good evening, folks.
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is Scott Weiss with the Gutierrez Company. How's everyone doing? It's been a long, long evening already.
It is. Good evening, Miss, good evening.
So thank you for reading off all the special permits, applications for this project. If, if I may, I have a quick summary presentation I can provide, if I can share my screen.
Please do.
Sorry. Are you able to see the screen?
Sure can.
We can see it. You're a little quiet. Should I just speak up a little bit?
Sure.
At least on my computer.
I'll lean in a little closer and, and talk a little louder. Does that sound a little better?
That's much better. Thanks.
Okay. So just to bring everybody up to speed, we're here tonight for 4 Burlington Woods, a building that was originally approved and developed as a, an office building, four-story office building, a little bit, approximately 100,000 square feet. The building was completed in 2016. In 2018, we had the board, the Planning Board, approved a special permit for lab use. Of course, 2019, you guys know the history and all the changes to encourage life science activity and, and development in the town, and the town became a platinum mass bio-ready community, which certainly helped the marketing. We certainly had the pandemic experience, and this was really one of the first life science projects following Millipore Sigma, and, and that project coming forward. And so we completed the building renovations to allow for, for lab use in the building. And at this point, we're, we're happy and thrilled to say that the, the building is fully leased. We have three tenants in the building. That include, there we go, this is a view of the building, that include a company called AltaVu on the top two floors, taking approximately half the building. ProtoGene, which was the first tenant signed on for the building. They're actually currently known as BioAnalytics in Cambridge, and they're merging with another company called GeneWork to create this new, new group called ProtoGene. And then the last company is Canbridge, going in on the first floor. These are really very impressive lands for the, for the, for the town, as they are some of the first sort of non-big-name, if you will, companies to locate here. And they're coming to Burlington because of everything, of course, Burlington offers. And this is really helping to establish the town as, as a, as a place in, in the life science market. I know we've talked about it earlier tonight. You guys talked about Broad Institute, which is really a terrific addition to the community. But it's these smaller companies that will really end up changing the nature. You know, Moderna started somewhere as, as, you know, an unknown company that nobody had ever heard of. And it's, it's these companies doing the research and developing new products and services that, that are really the ones that, that advance the science, not that Broad Institute doesn't, obviously, they do. But really help grow the industry in town here. So this is a multi-tenanted building, and as such, there are some centralized services. So our request comes in to you tonight to, to include some of the chemical storage and, and materials in the building that have been accommodated. This is the bottom floor, which has parking underneath the building. In here, there's a loading dock area, and there are some storage rooms that are set aside, so that all storage can be entirely within the building footprint. There's no anticipation for
Hello?
For storage outside. Yes. Sorry.
Hi, Paul. We can hear you.
Good.
So we have that space within the building. And then also, there is a centralized disposal system in the building and treatment, pretreatment, which is located in, also on the bottom floor in this area. We've been before the Board of Health. They've reviewed the submission of, of information and everything that, that's required. And was it last week? Had, had approved the project and issued conditions, I think, that have been sent off to the Planning Board. In addition, we've, we have a minor engineering change request moving out to the site. This is the outline of the building here, in this location. And we have a couple of modifications, including the addition of a monument sign, which, of course, we, we know we'll need to go through, you know, typical sign review. But we've already had during some of the build-out, people are not quite sure where 4 Burlington Woods is. And, and so the idea of providing an address and a directory at that location is important. And then lastly, as part of the work here, the tenants in the building need to have a liquid nitrogen, which is stored in a tank outside of the building, and that would be put in this area, which is, already exists between the stairwell to the, which is the first floor level up here, and the loading dock, which is underneath and here, and encapsulated between the loading dock and the stair, would be an area that would be fenced and bollard-protected to allow for the storage, the installation of a couple of nitrogen storage tanks, liquid nitrogen storage tanks. They're non-flammable liquids, so it's not typically, you know, an explosion concern or anything like that. And they would be permitted fully through the fire department, and additionally, through the Board of Health oversight through their, their process as well. So that's a quick summary of the couple of items that, that are before you tonight. Happy to answer any questions that you have on, on each or any of this, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is there a member of the board, or anyone on the board, that has any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, are we, we're not voting on this tonight, right?
We have prepared a decision for you this evening.
My only question was whether or not we should wait to hear from the Board of Health.
Board of Health heard this matter on February 22nd, and they have fully approved the matter. I was actually kind of curious why, the way in which, Scott, you put the last sentence. But they have looked at the whole proposal, including the exterior storage location, and have offered comments on, on all of them. It's not the first, none of this is the first of anything that we've had in town and reviewed. I will say that this was the first project that we all kind of said, wouldn't it be cool if we could attract life science tenants by kind of approving a, a lab permit to, you know, make it known that we were interested? And it's, it's just interesting tonight, especially to have this kind of full-circle approach of seeing this building fully leased, and with our first applicant with the Broad Institute. And I will say that, you know, this Burlington Woods is a, is a very nice park. It's all traditional office, 25 Burlington Mall Road, next to the Marriott. Does very well as traditional office, and still seems to. The rest of Burlington Woods isn't, and we are getting a lot of interest because of what's happening here at 4 Burlington Woods. So it has definitely spurred interest in this area as a cluster of businesses. So I credit us for, and Gutierrez for making this move to start attracting. And then, and that was in 2018, before we even really did a lot of stuff. So, you know, by getting these tenants and having them as part of 4 Burlington Woods is great. So, but we do have full comments from the Board of Health, and they did see, they did see them last, last Tuesday, right, this 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
I didn't make that clear. Apologize.
Thank you. Vice Chair Gaffney.
Thank you. Just to comment, as I look at Google Maps on this one. So this was the small parcel, right, that wasn't developed, and then there's a lot of construction going on, and they're trying to figure out what to go into that building, right?
That's correct. It was on the inside of the curve of Burlington Woods Drive, across from the Marriott and the three Burlington Woods.
So when you, when you fill liquid nitrogen tanks, it's a fairly loud process, if you've ever been near one. Now, the Marriott's over there, but I think on that side of it, that's where the function hall is. So you're not going to get kind of the people staying at the Marriott from a noise standpoint. And just kind of wondering, what time do you, are you going to have that filled, you know, with the liquid nitrogen? I know that's been an issue at the company I work with.
Yeah, I, good point. I, I wasn't aware of the sound that is involved with filling of the tanks. But this, the loading dock and the tanks are on the opposite side of the building from, from the Marriott itself. And like you said, the Marriott, this building is on the backside of the Marriott, where the function hall space is. So the building itself is shielding the, any of the noise transmission toward the Marriott? Beyond that, if there's a recommendation for restrictions on fill times, I, I think we would certainly advise by those.
And just that the height of those tanks are, how high? They're 15 feet high?
So I think they, they are a couple of different heights, and the tallest one would be, I think, about 15 foot high. And it's, they stand on small stands, which would make it, you know, it might be 17 feet high at, at the highest.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are those tanks closed off? Are they open to the public, or what do those look like?
Well, I know there are other tanks such as this in other places around town. They, what we would do is have a fence enclosure, a locked fence enclosure around it and bollards, so that the bollards would be inside the fence to help both protect any, any damage either way. And the fence provides the lock, control and security.
Thank you. Is there any other board member that has any questions or comments? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Espejo.
Yes.
Member Imtamba. Member LaRue.
Yes.
You have another motion, please.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of the Gutierrez Company for a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.9, hazardous and toxic materials, chemicals, used storage, transport, disposal, or discharge. Section 4.2.7.11, generation or storage of hazardous waste, limited Section four point two point seven point eleven, generation or storage of hazardous waste, limited to the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator, V S Q G. Section four point two point seven point twelve, generation or storage of hazardous weights in excess of the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator, V S Q G. And Section four point three point two fifteen, storage and disposal of oils, fuels, petroleum products of the zoning bylaws, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit B attached.
Second.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Españo?
Yes.
Member Impama?
Yes.
Member LaRue?
Yes. Um, Kristen, is there a minor engineering change as well, or is that something separate? They have a cha- may I have a motion on the minor engineering change, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at Four Burlington Woods Drive, for the premises, to allow for the installation of a three-foot-by-seven-foot concrete pad and a six-foot-high black vinyl chain-link fence to accommodate liquid nitrogen tanks for the use by tenants as reflected on the redline site plan entitled Four Burlington Woods Drive Minor Site Changes, prepared by R J O'Connell Associates, dated February second, twenty-twenty-two, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions listed.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Españo?
Yes.
Member Impama?
Yes.
Member LaRue?
Yes. Great. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And uh, you know, congratulations to the board in the town. Th- this I know this project, by comparison to some of the others, is a small project, but the realization of this that started a long time ago and the arrival of groups like Broad and Vericel um and and every, all the activity that's going on in the life science world, um it's a tremendous uh accomplishment by and the efforts of the town staff and and the boards and town meeting to to get this far and do this this quickly. I I know, you know, we list out, it's been, you know, six years on this project, but it is a tremendous accomplishment. Burlington is really part of the life science ecosystem now, and and that's that's no small accomplishment. That's uh that's pretty impressive, and we appreciate all of your hard work.
Oh, we thank you as well, because the Gutierrez Company has also been a a very integral part of that process.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good evening.
Have a good day.
Uh, moving forward, um minutes. Has everyone had a moment to review the minutes for February third, two thousand twenty-two?
Yes.
Yes.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of February third, twenty-twenty-two.
Second. Uh with um, I just made some additions to that. This is Bill. Minor minor additions with uh Brady.
Sure.
Okay. With amended?
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Españo?
Yes.
Member Impama?
Yes.
Member LaRue?
Yes. Thank you. Uh moving on to other matters. Uh the MBTA um has a multifamily zoning requirement for MBTA communities. The forum uh with Town Council and Development Development Departments and Select Board will be on uh will be conducted on the fourteenth at six P M. Uh enacted as part of the Economic Development Bill in January two thousand twenty-one, new Section three A of uh uh the M G L C forty A, the Zoning Act, requires that the MBTA community shall have at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as a right and meets other criteria set forth in the statute. Um certain things are discussed, it's minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre, not more than half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station, if applicable, no age restrictions, and suitable for families with children. Um, there is a sign update. Uh we were told that there will be a a a spring cleaning from the Building Department on illegal signs. Um as far as um
When you uh, can we give uh the Building Department kind of a laundry list of ones that are out there that we see?
Oh, for sure.
Okay, great.
So i- if you have ones, uh you if you have specific ones that, you know, we want to um address, you know, let's give that to staff and and move forward in that respect. Um item three, uh virtual versus in-person meetings. Um personally, I'd like to move forward with in-person meetings on uh on March uh March seventeenth. Does anyone have any objections with that? Okay.
Just to add, we'll still be hybrid. Um we, you know, obviously, you guys know about our advertising requirements and um as well as that I think I would like to suggest that we keep a hybrid approach. Um we have a lot of applicants with a big applicant team. It's nice to have as many people on the team as possible, and having uh remote options make it possible. Um as well as I think, you know, there's drawbacks on having remote participation of the public, but I think there's definitely certain groups that are able to um participate um because we have options for remote um participation. So um including, you know, especially families with young kids that just never participate, that are, we have seen a lot, a big tick up in participation. Um you know, if you're, well, it's nine fifty-seven, so if your kids are in bed, you still don't have to leave them to go to town. Um but or older people that, you know, can't leave, some some folks um they're take caring for. So um anyway, I just wanted to, I think it's good to see, uh to be together and be collaborative with all of you. Um just wanted to say that I think we should be thinking about um the different approaches that we've been able to achieve and actually have a lot of success with um.
Agreed, agreed. Uh uh you know, I definitely think that we we get a lot more done in person. Um and as a mom of two toddlers, you know, leaving my kids to come to Town Hall uh is difficult as well. Um but I think that, you know, um those folks that can't attend, even if they can't attend virtually, are always welcome to reach out to staff and reach out to the board members and, you know, we're you know, uh I I think I can speak for all of us that we're always available for folks to, you know, to to speak their piece. Um, moving forward with uh subcommittee reports. Sculpt uh Sculpture Park Committee?
Uh yeah, I think I kind of already said what I wanted to say. I mean, I can add to it that we are in the middle of our second call for artists. We'll be closing that um early April, so there's still a lot of time left. Um and just um right now concentrating on trying to raise some funds to buy global warming as soon as possible.
Great. Thank you, Barbara. Housing Partnership?
Um I can take that, Madam Chair. Um so still plugging along with housing needs assessment. Um this Tuesday, um there was a, the our consultants at um M A P C held a focus group with um with ten people. They're holding two other focus groups. We're kind of, we have all of the data that we have collected through, you know, um various sources such as, you know, um census and uh American Community Survey, et cetera, um regarding what the town has and um, you know, demographic info. Um but we really wanted to hear from people and kind of ground-truth it. So um that's what we're doing. So there's going to be two more um sessions on that. And then we want to have it done by June. So um there's also going to be a um there's going to be a townwide um event, um our townwide forum. It's going to be um virtual, so um stay tuned for that, and I will let you know when that's coming up. But that is all.
Great, thank you. Recreation Commission?
Yeah, nothing new there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Econo- uh Economic Development Committee?
Nothing new. Our next meeting is the Ides of March.
Thank you. Transportation?
Uh Transportation, we had a very interesting presentation by someone from uh Safe Roots to School. Uh I learned quite a few things. Uh there they have, there's 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 quite a few uh things they can offer and and data they can produce for us uh right now, or that they were initially working with the schools, but uh that I I'm not sure whether that has fallen apart right now, but uh and so it's it it's it's really not just for the schools, but is is what I'm trying to say. But in any case, the the presentation was interesting, and the Transportation Committee's meetings can be found on B C A T's government YouTube site, if you're interested in watching it. And it and it wasn't that long, it's probably forty-five minutes, so might be it might be a a good take. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh C B R C?
Um Sherri isn't here, and we're having a meeting next, what, Wednesday night? And that's about all I can tell you. At the moment, we're obviously looking at the two, at the uh at the uh zoning bylaw or uh submittals to to Town League for me.
Understood. Um I did ask staff about um master plan. Uh we do expect it to be completed before election, hopefully, or at least a a solid review. Um so if anyone, you know, I think staff can circulate a a final copy um at least the first week in April. So I think that's a great success, and I thank you, thank you all for that. Uh does anyone else have any unfinished business?
New business?
New business?
New business. Uh Madam Chair, I'd like to propose uh the planning board set up a committee, a subcommittee of sorts, a kind of informal group that would uh we've talked about, we've talked about numerous times uh over the past ten or more years on either pedestrian access or vehicle access, easier pedestrian access or vehicle access to the landlocked parcel. And uh I, in my opinion, I think all the major developers in Burlington should be a part of that conversation, not just Norwood. And I would like to see us set up a committee at least to tie in kind of roughly determine the cost, so we have an idea whether it's three million or twenty-five billion dollars to get across the highway. Um so that we can, then we can start maybe working on it or not working on it, but at least come to some sort of a conclusion on whether it's uh I mean, obviously, if you throw enough money at anything, it can happen, but whether it's feasible or not, I don't know. I'd be pre- I'd be prepared to serve in that committee if you so choose to set one up as chair.
I think that's a wonderful idea, and Ernie, I welcome the idea of you heading that task. Uh the other thing I think
I think, uh Brenda, if I may, I think that's an excellent idea. And we, you know, we have a a a business development uh director here in town. She's very good at getting grants.
Hmm, yes, yes.
You know, although it's not necessarily tied in with business development, it uh maybe we could uh en- enlist her and her staff's uh you know, expertise in 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 getting grants for something like that. I think there's probably some state money out there, particularly Burlington is, you know, is 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 the state of
Huge, huge amount of uh federal infrastructure money, and you might be able to, you know. Anyways, this might be a good opportunity to take a look at it and see if it's possible.
Another thing is uh if they pick up the the effort for the C P A, maybe that would be
Yep.
Something that could get, we'd get money through.
Yep. Um the other thing I think that, you know, was discussed this evening is a a solar bylaw.
Hmm.
Um I don't know if that's something is, you know, that we might be interested in pursuing for new construction. Um definitely something I want to dig a little bit deeper into, but it was brought up at least twice this evening, so um that might be something to just take a look at.
Yeah, so we did make changes to the solar bylaw, actually, to make it easier for folks and eas- more easily understood um what we want to allow and her um want to allow, but also kind of that ground-mounted where it is, kind of also things we were worried about. Um a couple of years ago, as I mentioned, the planned development districts haven't caught up with that amendment. Um this actually in North, uh in um Network Drive is catching up with that amendment. And if there's even more we want to do with that amendment, we can take a look and discuss um those solar options. But no, certainly, I mean, we're definitely hearing from land use and just in general, like how do we want to be promoting um different energy sources, getting off fossil fuels, like all of this? How do we um do kind of um whether it's lead or lead-like um provisions in all of our construction and environments?
So I think we, so maybe um, you know, given our, you know, next election year, we're going to have a a working meeting of, you know, kind of what goals are for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and maybe that can be added to it as well as
Yeah, and I will add, I mean, we we had this conversation with Eversource, but the the electrification of the electrical grid is critically important since as we want to move off fossil fuels and have alternative energy sources. How do, how are they fed into, how are those different alternatives fed into the grid and distributed? As well as, do we have enough of that grid to be powering things um in and around Burlington? So and we are having um standing meetings with Eversource. Um we just had one this week. We have another one um coming up at the end of March. Um and certainly will be including, this one was just kind of, should we have standing meetings? But we'll um certainly have the agendas more ahead of time and be able to re- um send out um what we're talking about, so we can invite those of you that are interested.
That's great. Okay. May I have a motion?
One one other, one other quick matter, if I could.
Sure.
Yeah. So just quickly, I um I know we had discussed the the three A committee going back, you know, being put back together, and I think this is see, if, you know, this would be an appropriate time to have that committee uh to be, you know, looking at a project like the um one before us now. Uh but I think we really need to get moving on getting that three A committee back together. As well as, I would like to see what we need to do to possibly pursue grants now in order to, you know, get um uh ultimately, what we want to do is we want to get the utilities, all the utilities underground throughout the whole downtown stretch. Um, you know, so that's something that, you know, we, again, a project of this size that's before us, this would be an opportunity to you know, had we been able to get, had we were able to get grants, you know, to cover some of those costs, um you know, we could make the developer cover the rest of the costs. And, you know, these are the, this is a, you know, a big stretch of of roadway going through the center. And I did speak with them initially with subcommittee and all. And, you know, they would like to do the same thing. So it's, you know, but obviously, it's, you know, they've looked into costs, you know, per mile, a half mile of doing that, and it's 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 exorbitant. So, you know, I I think it would behoove them to have it underground. It would behoove us, and you know, they think they'd be willing to contribute something towards that. So I don't know. You know, we should be getting these grants or lining this stuff up ahead of time, so that opportunities like this, you know, we would be able to take advantage of, you know.
Agreed. Um I I just want to soften that and just say, we can't make people do things. We can suggest people to do things and, you know.
Well, again, I I didn't even, you know, it it was actually a comment that they brought up that they would love to see.
No, that's great.
Makes a nice project. So it's, you know, you know, these are people that are willing to do it. But, you know, necess- can't necessarily, you know, afford the whole thing within the project like that. But if we had grant money and they were willing to contribute some and us some, and you know, it makes for a whole, you know, a much nicer project for them and a much better downtown for us, so.
I agree. I agree. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Um for the three A uh three A Town Center, this keeps coming up, and I um I just wonder, um Madam Chair, if you, if either as chairman you want to reach out, or if you and I want to reach out to the selectmen, it's as it was sitting with the selectmen before, we've kind of said independently, if they don't want to do it, we'll set up a subcommittee. But I think there is interest there, um certainly. And I just, I think we should probably at least set up that meeting jointly with the selectmen, some selectman members and planning board, select board members um and planning board members to kind of at least roundtable that discussion a little bit to see where we want to go. Um I'm happy to, if you want to reach out, or if I'm happy to do do it, we can talk offline about it. But um I think and I think a lot of members are probably interested, so we'll certainly need, probably want to post that, whatever that meeting ends up being. But um that's what I would suggest. We can talk talk about it more offline.
Absolutely.
But uh I think it is important. I think there is a But I think it is important, I think there is a lot of town center. I mean, as this meeting just proves, the town center is a really unique and special place that people have a lot of feelings about, which is fantastic. And we, I think it is super appropriate to have a type of committee specifically for the town center as we have for so much of the years that I've been here. So anyway, I I totally support the effort, but I think we should have that conversation.
Absolutely, thank you, Kristen. All right, folks.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Impama.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Night, everyone.
Thanks, folks, it was, it was a tough meeting, we did well.
Good job, Brenda.
Have a good night, folks.
Thank you, thanks.